Good evening, City Attorney, I'm glad you could join us from the beach.
I was on vacation, but not anymore, right?
Hey, City Clerk, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and begin? Good evening, everyone.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of June 1st, 2021, and we are calling the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Mason.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina. I see he's here, but his video is turned off. He may have stepped away. And Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. And now we'll go on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. At this time, if there are folks in the audience that would like to speak, and again, our topic for tonight is our conducting the study session to review the city manager's proposed budget, operating and capital. So if you want to speak on that, that would be the next item. But this is for items that are not on the agenda. And we'll go ahead, and if you could raise your hand at this time, and we'll have up to three minutes where we will start to begin to call you in with the help of our city clerk.
First, we have Gero Nutean.
Hi, yes, I'm Gero Nutean. Hopefully, you're hearing me. The audio is working on me. Nice to virtually meet everyone. I just wanted to ask a nice question of the city council. I am a regular user of the Commodore Dog Park, which since COVID has hit, I believe they've turned off the water for the dogs as well as the water contents for people. I recently filed a request on the website, but I just want to share it also in this forum. If we could get the water running again for the dogs, like the bowls on the bottom, the little dispenser, because as the weather is warming up, it's kind of getting to the point where dogs are getting very thirsty, and there's not much we can do other than tote in bottles of water. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe any of the hell orders of San Mateo County prohibit this. At least other dog parks outside of San Bruno seem to have their water running fine. I've been to many other dog parks in the Bay Area, so just wanted to bring that up. And I understand, you know, I'm not looking for a decision of the council, but just, you know, can we make sure that the staff investigate and take appropriate action?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and staff is here and has heard your inquiry. So thank you for being here, and thank you for letting us... Is there any other members of the community? Not seeing any hands this time. We'll go ahead and move on to item number four. That is the study session, which will be to conduct the study sessions to review the city manager's proposed budget for year 2021, 2022. That is the Operating and Capital Improvement Program, CIP budget. And I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just work our PowerPoint, and then we will be ready to begin. Okay, did you see the full slide? Good afternoon. Actually, I should say good evening. Good evening, Council. Javon Brogan, your city manager. And I am here with the wonderful pleasure to present to you the city manager's proposed budget. So I am joined here by Assistant City Manager Jennifer Brazil, Finance Director Chin Yu-Sun, as well as all of our department heads who are here and able to answer any questions, and some of them will be given presentations tonight. So why don't we launch right in? The goal, or the first objective tonight is for you to formally receive the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2122. Let me begin by saying we've heard you, those of you that were on council last year and those of you in the public. And you said, "Cut down the slides." And so this last presentation was over 300 slides. We are now down to sub 200. Some of them we will go through quickly, but the point is to give you a high-level overview of the budget, and we have a top 10 that we'll go through. So this will be a little bit of a detailed presentation. We are not planning on giving you excruciating detail, so if we gloss over something that you're interested in, hold us up and brush back. We're trying to strike that happy balance between giving you the comprehensive knowledge of the $193 million organization that is the city of San Bruno, but also doing that in a way where we're not going through things that you've already read that you don't have a question on. So hopefully, we strike the right balance. We will give what we're calling departmental budget highlight presentations, and primarily departments will concentrate on things that are changing in their budget. For the most part, this is a status quo baseline budget with the exception of a number of enhancements. And so if you have questions about baselines, feel free to ask them, but we're really going to concentrate on the challenges and things that are changing, and then ask questions. Key point, this study session is purposely just a few days after you've received the over 500-page budget book. And so we are not expecting you to have gone through every page and know everything in detail. This is purposeful, that we are giving this presentation, give you an overview, probably to channel some of your questions and answer some of those questions that I know some of you guys reviewed the budget book and haven't. And so ask questions. We will have, this presentation is really broken down in a few different sections, and we'll go through that in one short minute. What are our goals today? We really have four. We would like you to depart this room, this virtual room, if you will, with a deeper understanding of the organization's budget, and also with the knowledge of both our immediate and long-term financial challenges facing the general fund as well as our enterprise funds. And have the ability to really articulate that to your constituents. The budget is sort of this amorphous thing that only those of us that care and dedicate the hours to it really do. But we want you empowered that when you have questions from your constituents about what are the city's priorities? Where does it allocate its funds? Why does it take so many tax dollars to keep the status quo going? That we're giving you the knowledge to do that. And we also keenly want you to leave this room feeling satisfied that either, one, your questions have been answered, or two, that we will address them in one of our subsequent budget meetings. So ask the question. We will do our best to provide you with an answer. If we do not know the answer, we will pause and we will come back. Also recognize that while this is the second year we've done the virtual budget presentations, we will be a little hamstrung by the technology. We have four people in this room. We have our other department heads remote. And so there may be a little switch, a little delay deciding on who exactly will respond to your question, and will you please bear with us? So tonight's agenda, we really have four parts of this presentation. One is a high-level overview of the budget development process, sort of a ground setting, what brought us to where we are tonight with the budget and what comes after tonight's presentation. Then we'll go through the proposed budget and have a discussion in that. And we structured this around what we're calling the top 10. We call it the top 10 highlights. We call it the top 10 items. We call it the top 10 things that we thought you wanted to know, but just accept it as a top 10. And maybe there'll be an 11 or 12, but we hope by sort of purposefully stepping through these top 10 that we address the most critical items. And then we'll have those departmental highlight presentations and then take any additional questions you have and discuss. I want to pause for a moment. We do have breaks built in after these sections. So after section two, we have a break, and in the middle of section three, we have a break. And I assume we will be taking a break after section three. For public comment, we have envisioned that to occur between section three and section four, so after we get through the departmental presentations. In prior years, some years we've gotten all the way through all of our departmental presentations and had time for council questions. Other times, we have paused some way through the departmental presentations and addressed those at our next budget meeting. We're flexible. We're willing to do, we're willing to do it either way. It really will depend on our dialogue and our engagement and the questions. And so while we want you to ask questions, we also know that the budget is a sort of, it's everything, right? And we can go down every rabbit hole, and the more rabbit holes we go down, the longer the conversation will take. So we want to have those high-level questions and then keep going through. So stop us if you have a question. Otherwise, hold it, and we will come back. Quick overview of the budget development process. I know council knows this, but for any members of the public that may be watching this now. Or later, each May, the city manager submits the proposed budget to the city council, and that's for both our operating and capital budget for the following fiscal year. We operate on a June-to-July fiscal year. All of the public meetings, like the one we're having now in the council deliberations on other parts of the budget that happened before or after today are public meetings, and where we take public comment. Expenditures do not legally exceed the budget appropriations, so this is key, right? When I was starting my government career, a city manager dropped a budget on my desk and said, "The budget is a key to the city. If you want to understand what the city cares about, look at their budget." And then we also do quarterly and mid-year reviews. This is a long list. I won't go through everything, but know that we began this process in February with an internal budget kickoff where instructions were given to departments. We also had a number of sessions with the city council, your strategic initiatives, and it sort of seems like a long time ago, but we were setting those in March for adoption for this budget that will take effect in July 1. And I know some of you guys have even asked me, "Hey, we talked about that in March. Where are you at on it?" Well, that was a new one, and that one probably isn't funded, or we're going to get on that in this new upcoming fiscal year. March and April, the departments met with finance. April and May, they met with me. We had another strategic initiative session with council. On May 28, you received your proposed budget, and we're here today with three subsequent meetings to follow, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So what were my instructions to departments? Status quo. Unfortunately, of the two of the three years I've been here, we've been doing status quo budgeting, which means that only enhancements that align to a city council priority focus area. A lot of those most important things that have not been able to be done, likely won't be able to be done, because unfortunately, we just don't have the resources, and that is our reality, unfortunately. And so we began with the baseline and then built on from there. There was a number of analysis that went around the baseline. Baseline budget was limited to only increases for inflation or other contractual expenditures that we may have. Again, budget expenditures must align to a council priority focus area. And the last one here may seem simple, but it's really extremely important, which is the general fund reserve targets to be funded at their policy level. But another component there is our reserve balances, and especially our capital and equipment balances, are not where they need to be, and we'll talk in detail. And what that meant is while we have some needs, and while we may have money in our capital reserve, because our general fund is challenged due to the city net loan and other pressures on it, we don't have the ability to allocate those funds out of those other reserves, because we need to preserve cash. Because in times of challenge, cash is king, and you need liquidity, and we unfortunately have been going through one of those periods where government always has to have money, and you always have to have the resources to protect the public and spend money when others don't have it. So the subsequent budget deliberations, so we have tonight our study session on the operating budget, council questions. Next, have our budget hearing number one. That will be a little bit of a repeat, because it will be the first public hearing at a regular council meeting. And then if we do not get through everything today, we will have those presentations that we're not able to get through today on the 8th. We will again take and respond to questions. And then the very next day, that Wednesday, we have our presentation on the capital improvement program, the CIP budget, and then final deliberations and adoption on the 22nd. Council priority focus areas, you know these well, so I will not go through all seven that are there. As you know, they are in no priority order of preference, but they are all critically important, and there are strategic initiatives that underpin all of these, and many of them are funded in this budget. So now let's have that, or enter that second phase of our budget discussion, and let's begin with the top 10. So what is the top 10? The top 10 are these items. So I'm going to follow the old adage. Tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them, and tell them what you just told them. And hopefully, by the end, we'll all be there, and the budget will be transparent and clear. So first, we're going to talk about the general fund baseline. What is the outcome between our regular revenues and our expense? Major items affecting our general fund baseline revenues? The major items affecting our general fund baseline expenditures? Next, we'll talk about continuing challenges and threats to the general fund. We'll go through the position summary. We'll talk about Measure G. We'll talk about ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, literally the largest federal assistance since the New Deal, really helping us and all other municipal agencies out at this very tough time where we've been hit hard on the revenue side. Capital improvement program funding, we'll just give a highlight tonight. We'll talk about the funding for council strategic initiatives, and then we'll talk about the proposed budget enhancements. And again, that's above baseline. So we will step through each of these top 10, and each of the top 10 sections begins with this transition page that says, "Number one, baseline, this is our general fund baseline. What's the outcome when we do regular revenues over expenditures?" And in this section, we will be talking about some high-level budget stats, a general fund summary, and then a comparison to other cities. At some point real soon now, I will actually take my seat, because this entire intro presentation, I'm going to tag team with our Finance Director Chin Yu-Sun. And so while I transition to the next slide, why don't I do this? So at a high level, this slide is intended to tell you the size and breadth of our organization. And so we're, we feel like a small city. We're a municipal corporation, and our annual corporation budget is $193 million proposed for the coming 21, 22 fiscal year. And I think the average resident doesn't realize that the city of San Bruno is nearly a $200 million corporation that provides services that they depend on every year. Our general fund is approximately a quarter of that, so $51 million. We have baseline 246 FTEs. And in the proposed budget that is before you, there are 104 capital improvement projects that are funded in some measure. Some of them are one-year, some of them are multiple years, but all of them progress is planned to decay. And so now I'll turn it over to our Vice Director Chin Yu-Sun to take us through the next few slides.
Thank you, Javon. Chin Yu-Sun, Finance Director. Here is our general fund summary. I want to draw your attention to the most right column and the proposed budget. General fund will expect to have a revenue of $55 million and expenditure of $51.1 million. So we'll live up to the deficit of almost $600,000. At the end of the year, we're expecting to have just over $2 million of fund balance. This is a look of our general fund's revenues and expenditures. Majority of the general fund revenues are coming from tax, like 20% from property tax, 20% from sales tax, and our hotel motel tax is probably another 3%. And then some other community services. And departmental revenues are relatively, they're about 14%. And then also we get transfers from other funds that about 13% of the revenue. Expenditure rate, 58% of the expenditure is coming from public safety. That's the Police and Fire Department. General admin takes about 11% of the expenditure portion. And then the other, the next big one is the community services, so that's about 14% of overall general fund. This is a look of how we come up with the general fund fund balance inside, according to the proposed budget. So at the beginning of, at the end of this fiscal year, we're expecting to have a general fund balance of $2.6 million. And then, so there is a little bit of variance in this slide that we talked about. So our, this $49.9 is a true operating revenue. The revenue we gave you a moment ago is $50.5 million. That's actually including some transfers. I'll come to that transfers in the down below. Expenditure is $51.1 million, and there's actually all the ratings deficit is 1.2. So we're projecting the fund balance at $1.4 million. What's the variance between $50.5 million revenue and $49.9 million revenue? That's a $600,000 transfer we're hoping to get, to transfer from Measure G to general fund. With that transfer, we're able to bring the general fund balance to $2 million. That's above our general fund fund balance policy that we're targeting, 1.5.
Fire to enhancements and enhancement requests.
That's correct. Next section. What are the major items affecting general fund revenue? In this section, we're going to talk about general fund revenue comparison with other cities. We're talking about property asset valuation, and then we'll also give you some general fund revenue highlights, and then also give you our general fund tax revenues properly. This is a comparison of our city's general fund revenue with some other peer cities in this county of San Miguel. As you can tell, San Bruno is really on the low side regarding all the general fund revenues. And also, the orange portion is our property tax. Information has told us comparing with this county average, the San Bruno average property value is really on the low side, and we're below the county average. That's why our property tax receipts are quite substantially below the level of the city and the county.
Yeah, and it's worth noting here that, for example, Burlingame, when you look at this orange column, which represents our property tax, we are 43,000 people. Burlingame is 30,000 people. So, one, their total general fund revenue is more than ours, but their property tax is actually $13 million more than ours. And so when your constituents look at the resources that Burlingame is able to bear and how they're able to maintain their facilities, it's important to note that while they are a smaller city, their baseline revenue is significantly more than San Bruno's. And just on the property tax, it's $13 million more. And so as you all know, economic development and raising our asset value is critical.
So we did a compilation of general fund budget revenue per capita, that's based on the number of residents in the city. San Bruno, the capital general fund revenue, you know, again, is on the low side. We're just slightly above $1,000 per resident. And most other cities are above us. The only city, which is the largest, is Dallas City. But bearing in mind, Dallas City has a bi-annual budget, that budget period. So this year's budget is lower from the previous year's differential change. So that number is relative to that, it's skewed.
Yeah, and it's worth noting that daily city 100,000 people. And so the revenue per capita is just skewed a little bit compared to these other cities, just basically because of their size as well. And this is one of the things when we say, "San Bruno has a revenue problem. We don't have an expenditure problem. We have a revenue problem."
This is the trend of the county property value increase. This is the county wise, not just number. So the top property value ever since the Great Recession of 2000 has been increased substantially, especially for the last, especially after COVID. The county wise, for the last, through last year, the county value increased by 7, over 7%. And then 7% has been consistent, the ratio of increase for the last three years. I would like to give you some general fund spending highlights. Our revenue, our property tax revenue is expected to increase moderately with the housing market to remain hot. How hot the market is going to continue at this pace, we don't know. That all depends on the supply and demand and interest rate. Right now, the interest rate is extremely low, so people are, lots of people are working from home. They're investing, purchasing residents. So the property, the housing market across the nation are hot, but the term of the heat in the housing market is yet to be known. Next thing is our sales tax revenue. Our sales tax revenue will be increased about 11%, mostly due to economic activity increase after the state fully opens as of June 15. And then the majority of our tax revenue also came just from a few major identified, including Walmart, Walmart, and some other sales tax generation.
And so this 11% is that normal compared to our other peers, and it fully reflects annually the property, the sales tax sharing agreement with Walmart back home in that revenue.
The unfortunate story of general fund revenue starts with QOT. Although our QOT revenue, that's the Transdial frequency tax, will increase about 72% in the next fiscal year, but that's compared to the prior year, you know, we are in an extremely low QOT revenue receipt this year. So even with that 72% increase, our QOT revenue is still going to be less than half of what we had received with pre-COVID. The next biggest issue in our general fund next revenue is vehicle license fees. Vehicle license fees will be nine thousand lower. We've been talking, we have been discussing this story several times. And then we, recently, I also saw the mayor's letter to advocate it for the state assistance for the vehicle license fees. So basically, our vehicle license fee will be 9% lower next year, because more schools are converting into the basic schools. The tax, the revenue funding basis for the vehicle license fee is really lower than before.
And we know that we've talked to council a lot about this, but know that while that revenue is lower, it is money that is due to us. And there is a coalition of cities in San Mateo County, as well led by the county, that are communicating with the state and have successfully received or tentatively have received reimbursement within the governor's proposed budget for the 1920 fiscal year. However, for the 2021 fiscal year, it's important to note that we, just in the city of San Bruno, lost $2.4 million due to the VLS decline. And so that money is due to us, and it's currently by reimbursement basis, two years in the rear. And the mayor recently sent a letter to state legislators articulating on behalf of San Bruno and their coalition of cities to try and get a statewide legislative fix to this, where we do not have to wait for that money to be reimbursed to us, but therefore, a guarantee in the fiscal year that the money will be paid. So just know that while the money has been taken out of this budget, it is money that is due to San Bruno, and we are working hard with others to receive it.
Here is a look at the general fund revenue change by numbers. I'm not going to rehash all the ones we just talked about. I just want to point out the revenue car room B. Some of the council member has discussions on that, the car room pack, car room B in the past. So we are projecting a 14% increase of car room B, but that's purely because of the new request of increasing that table to 43, 38 to 43. So that carries our revenue increase, and that's the significant by 14%. Our business tax expectation forecast is remaining about flat. We're only looking at 1% increase on the tax revenue for that fiscal year. All of the general fund revenue is going to increase, the tax revenue is going to increase by just 7% from a extremely low year of a receipt.
Worth noting that that 7% is a little bit, approximately just under $2 million.
This is the property tax, I'm sure you have seen this before, so I just want to reemphasize that for every dollar of property tax that, at the city of San Bruno, we only get 15%. Uh, the bulk of the money goes to the school district and the county. Just give you a look of our 25 largest sales tax unit later in San Bruno. So I'm not going to reiterate, so I just list them all on, on the, on the right column, they are in alphabetical order. And they're not telling you which one's the biggest, which one's the lowest. But, uh, I don't think it's any use to you, uh, who is bringing out the biggest dollar on the sales tax. And the type of sales tax, we do expect sales tax to increase, and then, we talked about sales tax, we expect it to increase by 11% in the next fiscal year.
Okay, and I, I want to pause right here to just talk about JCPenney's because we have been asked before, uh, how is JCPenney's doing, um, and are there any indications that they're enclosed? And should we pull them out or, or reduce our sales tax, uh, projections because of what's happening with JCPenney's? Know that we do monitor that, uh, revenue from JCPenney's closely every quarter. Um, I, I know that members of the council and some members of, of our community know that our local JCPenney's uh, site is being sold, and with 25 other JCPenney sites as part of the JCPenney bankruptcy proceeding, uh, we have been in touch with, uh, the individuals representing that sale. It is important to note that as a part of that transaction, there's the expectation that the new buyer will allow JCPenney's to continue to have a leasehold for approximately four years. And so there's no certainty that, uh, JCPenney's will continue to, to be operating here for four years or longer. We do know that, that that is a part of the, the transaction that is envisioned, and so we have not carved out any uh, revenue from JCPenney's, uh, in next year's budget. We will continue to closely monitor, um, and know that that is a typical transaction, uh, because the likely reuse of that site is a redevelopment, uh, which will require a reentitlement. And so it is not uncommon for the current owner to, to ask for and receive a lease interest for a few years under the new owner as the new owner is going through their bidding and entitlement process. Uh, and so, um, we, we are continuing to include JCPenney's in our sales tax revenues, uh, at the appropriate, um, projection. Uh, and, and the number I said before, it's a $3 million increase in our, in our revenues from, uh, 29.6 to 32.1. So even though it's only 7%, it is a $3 million increase, which is important as we talk about our, uh, our, our, our long-term forecast.
Uh, this is just a look at our sales tax, uh, our much sales tax reaction too. So if anybody could, could just something that in our mayor's city, San Bruno, they pay 9.75%. Then 9.75% also includes the intense, uh, increase, uh, operated by owners for Measure G. Um, but of all the 9.75% paid and sales tax by a consumer, 62% goes to the state of California, and 23% goes to the county and special district. Only 15% gets retained by the city's revenue. Uh, this is a look of the TOT, TOT contributors from within the mayor's city, San Bruno. They have a total of about 12 hotels. Um, so these are the number of rooms each hotel has by pie chart. Um, TOT, as we talked a moment ago, continue to be down significantly, that's comparing with the pre-COVID levels. Uh, two, we have, um, the city has authorized a 2% TOT rate increase, which took effect on January 1st, 2021. So right now, the TOT rate is 14%, that's 12% and some higher. The, he, TOT pre-COVID, that's, that's why 18, uh, 1819, that's the last pre-COVID year, we really see 3.6 million in TOT from the winter. Uh, in the, this, in the year after, we should get like about three months of impact of collectively, the revenue dropped to 2.6, that's a $1 million difference. Obviously, most of the TOT revenue came, came in, in the last quarter of the month, that has a tourist in the city, yeah. In, in this fiscal year, we're only going to receive about $950,000 in TOT revenue. That's still with the 14% uh, TOT tax rate. In next year, we're expecting to make about 1.6 million. Yes, we're picking up substantially over 950 million, uh, 950,000 we received this year. But this number compared with the pre-COVID number at 3.6 in fiscal year 1819, it's only about 44% of the pre-COVID level.
And, and that projection is based off, uh, the, the latest few months of increased hotel stays, um, even though, uh, we're, we're 44% down. So it's, we're, we're 2 million, we're 2 million down from the pre-COVID 19 number. Uh, and so I will pick it up now to talk about our, uh, major items affecting general fund expenditure. So we'll talk about some pressures on our, on our general fund or expenditure, we'll give you a summary. But we'll talk about pension costs, health and other insurance costs, as well as, uh, we will just give a quick highlight of our, uh, positions by labor unit and those contracts expired. So what is some of the pressures on our general fund operating budget? Uh, and it's both expenditure pressures and, uh, pressures from having a status quo budget. So CalPERS, uh, rising pension costs, uh, we will talk about that, uh, in just the next slide, but that has created over a $1.2 million challenge, uh, this year that had to be incorporated in the baseline budget. So baseline revenues, uh, went up by 3 million, but 1.2 were increased CalPERS cost. You can just see there how, uh, that constrains, uh, uh, the budget. Uh, increases in health and other insurance costs, as well as, uh, the MOU changes, uh, that, uh, will be coming due in the coming fiscal year. Um, and status quo budgeting, uh, we all know this, but status quo budgeting means that, uh, we have reduced staffing, um, 20, uh, 24 positions, um, and with the recent cuts, we're not able to fully restore them. Status quo budgeting also means limited ability to enhance facility maintenance and infrastructure maintenance. I know council knows this well, I know the public knows this well. Uh, unfortunately, we just don't have the funds and have not had the funds, uh, for quite some years to take maintenance to the level, uh, that, um, the community and staff wants it to be. Um, significant backlog of our capital projects remain, uh, and, and when we do status quo budgeting, that, uh, that list doesn't increase, uh, or doesn't decrease, it actually only, uh, increases. And then, like we said last year, there are no easy decisions, uh, we cannot afford to address all of our needs. And so I'll put it back to the, our finance director to go through, uh, some numbers.
Thank you, Paul. Um, so this is, I, I would draw attention to the 2021, 22 proposed budget. So how do we come up with a 51.1 million budget? Come from a various, uh, but, um, various departments, the general government, that includes the city manager's office, council courts, and finance, and the char, and city attorney, which is going to be about 5, 5.8 million. The thing is, the expenditure, of course, coming from food and fire, in total, they're going to, um, take about the 31 million of the total general fund budget. And then, probably watch about 3.7, and community CED is about 3 million, and 7.8 million from the services. There's a heavy number for non-departmental, these are, the next number is just a cost allocation. That is with the non-departmental expenditure to be charged. Some expenditures to the non-departmental, uh, accounts, because those expenditures such as animal service, they don't belong to any department, so they're getting charged there. So in all in all, we're going to see a spending increase from this fiscal year by 7% to reach a total of 51.1 million. Next question.
Okay, so this is what we, um, I'm sorry, change it.
Oh, okay.
I'll take this one.
Okay.
Uh, pension, we mentioned pension, uh, uh, pension costs are separated in two categories. Uh, a contribution to normal cost and a contribution to the unfunded actuarial liability, or what they call the unplayed liability. It's important to note, the normal cost is paying for the benefits in the year that the employee accrues it. And so, uh, 3.9 million, um, essentially what that is, is that paying for the benefit that our employees are accruing in the coming fiscal year 2021, 22 for their retirement. The unfunded liability is that our plans, uh, have a significant unfunded liability, and we have, um, essentially what's, uh, what's called a UAL, an actuarial, uh, an unfunded actuarial liability that spreads that liability over 30 years, think of it as a mortgage. And so we have to pay down that mortgage. And so the payment on that unfunded liability is 7.9 million. And so that's an increase of 1.1 million. And you take the 1.1 million in the unfunded liability, and you add that to the increase in normal cost, that's the 1.2 million dollars that I mentioned of just simple pension increase that has to be accommodated in the baseline. Um, and, and the reasons for this are many, and we've talked about it, um, uh, at, at prior sessions. If you're in council, feel free to ask, uh, questions because we talk a lot about CalPERS, hoping they'll want to, um, uh, build there because we know we've had, uh, other boards talk about that. And so pension costs.
Okay, okay, pension costs, of course, uh, this is just, uh, showing you the right, the chart on the left side is the unfunded, like, um, unfunded actuarial liability contribution, as you can see, it's been increasing anyway. Uh, this is looking by, uh, the plan, miscellaneous safety plan. Um, miscellaneous is the orange section, safety plan on, on the, uh, is the red, uh, portion. The all those smaller PAPRA, after 2013, the city, the state has started a new, uh, new, so some new employees that hired after that date on the PAPRA, but our membership in that, in the PAPRA plans are so small, so they're not showing, uh, this chart. And what I want to show, what I want to say a little bit more about unfunded actuarial liability, so where are they coming from? The unfunded actuarial liability remaining comes, coming from two sources, and neither of them can be controlled by the city of San Bruno. One major source of unfunded liability is the investment return. So every time when the pension return is below the expected return, that creates an unfunded liability if you're not meeting your investment target. Um, this has been very evident since the start of the financial, uh, the late recession. The, see, the CalPERS still has their pension and annually required rate of return set at 7%, it should be 7 and 1/2 and 8%. But as we all know, in the investment market, in the, it's a very diversified pension portfolio, the benefit you can, you can obtain for the next 10 years is mostly expected to be 5, 6%, so we're going to see, our goal is every year that we measure a return, if you're below the required return of 7%, we're going to accrue additional, uh, unfunded actuarial liability. That's one contributor of unfunded actuarial liability. The second contributor is the assumption change. So the CalPERS will make assumption changes regarding the membership, um, salary increase, um, mortality, mortality rate, and then, uh, discount rate, inflation rate, all these contribute to the assumption change. When the assumption changes, sometime will see a significant change to the unfunded liability, actuarial liability as well. We are expecting to see, uh, the city's contribution for the unfunded actuarial liability to increase this year, um, for, for the next few years to increase year after year. The chart on the right side is the total contribution by the city of San Bruno. So, um, the absolute dollar value is going to increase, and that's the bar. And then, the line is the rate, even though the rates you can see dislocated in, uh, 2020, 25, 26 range, but our dollar value doesn't come up, so that's still going to be a pressure on our budget. Um, next, our house, the other contribution to our expenditure pattern is the house and insurance cost. Our total house and other insurance cost will increase by 6% next year, a total of $370,000. General, general fund will pay the impact of about over $350,000, and the financial funds are very small, generally being paid by $30,000. So here is a look of the, the city's union contract. As we all know, I'm sure you all know, our union contracts are to expire by the end of this calendar year. And then, we have about six members from the San Bruno Management Employee Association, 13 members from the management funding unit, 90 members from Teamsters, 15 from Public Safety, and then, 28 from San Bruno Professional Fire Department Association, 45 from police. And then, there's also nine of, uh, all represented, so total impacted, you know, total, uh, number of union members was all, all represented about 25. And next, so I have another question, Paul.
Okay, um, and, you know, I, I should go back, uh, this is actually, it says budgeted positions, but it's actually, these are members as of today, uh, budgeted positions are, uh, 240. So, in section four, we're going to talk about continuing challenges and threats to the general fund. So we'll talk about our long-range financial forecast, we'll, we'll talk about some of the challenges, and then we will address, uh, our reserves, as well as talk about, uh, how our capital program fund balances are a concern for our general fund. Four-year forecast, so, uh, this is another, uh, forecast, it has been updated. It is significantly better than the one seen before. The revenue in the expenditure line, because we cut and cut so deeply, are coming into more alignment. What this also shows is that if we stay the course, uh, revenues will begin to outpace our baseline, uh, expenditure projections. Now, we know that there are more needs than we're able to fund, so that expenditure line will, will absolutely fluctuate in the future. Uh, but, but this forecast is based off of, uh, no change in, in service levels. Uh, it's also important to note that there are cost drivers for not only personnel, but all of our, uh, line items, contractual services built into the model that they vary. A dynamic model that has assumptions built into it. It is also conservative for development projects, it's probably worth pausing here because I know that council members, uh, you receive questions from constituents saying, hey, I've heard about that, uh, development, we're going to start seeing those revenues. It's important, uh, I think I have a high-low summary. If, when the project is entitled, and there will have been a lot of talk in the public even before it's entitled, but after it's entitled, and the, the city council says, yes, your, your project, or the planning commission said, yes, your project is approved, it's typically a six to maybe 12-month timeframe to get a building permit. And then for larger developments that are developed over a two-year cycle, the county assessor reassessed after each year. And so they will, let's say, let's take our, our recreation and aquatic facility as an example, even though we, we're not going to pay taxes on that. Um, that's a $50 million building, the first year, let's say we spend 25 million building that building. The county assessor will assess it if it was a private property at a $25 million value. And then after the second year of construction, assess it for 50 million. And so, from the time the project is approved, it could be another three years before we see the full new property tax value revenue come in. And so this is a, this is a, 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 it's a long game, right? Uh, and so we really need to stay the course, but in, in our general, our long-range general, um, fund forecast is, is, is starting to show that, uh, honestly helped because we cut, we cut so deeply due to COVID-19. And so, uh, challenges, um, our, our hiring labor, uh, contracts, our collective bargaining agreements, we talked about that. Uh, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, uh, as the council knows, that fund is projected to be an additional $1 million, um, uh, negative next year, so if our current, uh, two, uh, Prop 218 balance process is not successful, then we will, uh, be coming back, uh, and developing strategies with a $1 million operating shortfall. Um, and then another Um, and then unlike the city net deficit, which is larger, uh, at fifteen million, uh, the operate, a billion dollar operating shortfall is a today problem. A problem that we will be, um, uh, forced to come back to the city council and grapple with how to solve that problem either by, uh, cutting expenditures, uh, cutting maintenance on our stormwater system, uh, delaying projects or, uh, absorbing that money, uh, through other sources that are, are not readily there. Uh, uh, talked about city net, uh, fifteen million dollar deficit. Uh, we have a presentation, uh, that is one of the department highlight presentations, so you'll receive information on that. Needed personnel investment, uh, continued challenge. Uh, IT, uh, system maintenance, so there are a number of enhancement requests, uh, aligned to improving our IT infrastructure. We have a number of systems that are into life, a number of systems that are no longer supported. Uh, and frankly, systems we need to invest in so we are a more efficient organization. Uh, and so those are the budget. One of them is a significant, it's a two million dollar system, our enterprise resource system. The financial, um, uh, backbone that runs our entire organization is in need of replacement and we'll be talking about that. Our vehicle and equipment fund, uh, vastly underfunded, um, but we're not able to actually even draw significantly from that fund due to, uh, our reserve and the pressure on our reserves, uh, in large to the city net deficit. Uh, and again, the continued challenge with status quo budgeting means that, uh, unfortunately, the same conditions can continue and we're, we're not able to, we're, we're able to address them in a piecemeal fashion. Um, but really not, uh, how we as staff and we know the city council wants to address it. Uh, and so now we will talk about, um, our, our reserve and I will turn it to our finance director, Tim Yussa.
Okay, Jom. So we hit, in next fiscal year, so what, what do our reserve look like? Um, like we mentioned, talked about when we go and general fund, um, reserve fund balance is actually just a die of the two million dollars in the first line. General fund reserve is actually our savings account. Our policy requires to have twenty percent of annual budget expenditure a month. So we end up with next fiscal year about two point, twelve point three million, just one die of, maybe a little bit, twelve point three million dollars, which is actually lower than, uh, our twenty-five percent requirement. You do remember in our proposal, we talked about that, uh, the general fund expenditures of fifty-one point one million dollars. Twenty-five percent of fifty-one point one million dollars is actually close to four point eight, um, million dollars. So we're about, um, five hundred thousand dollars less than the policy requirement on, on saving the complex general fund return. We also have another called, uh, general fund capital reserve, uh, we require on the five, five million balance in that. So next year, we're actually looking pretty good at this point, nine point three million dollars. Um, if you recall, we received the four and a half million from, uh, YouTube. That money is actually a one-time money, we, we put it into the capital reserve. This, this reserve account is also called one-time initiative. So we put, that's where the money, uh, the balance increased so much, um, from the previous year. I believe the previous year in nineteen, I mean, in the last budget session, we're expecting the, the reserve for that item is under five million dollars.
Right, uh, and it's important to note that, uh, the city council knows we've talked about, uh, that money, the four point five million dollar community benefit going to the aquatic network that are fully fund that budget. Uh, that is in your capital improvement budget. It is showing here in fund balance because that money is projected to be spent in year two. So in twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's why it remains here in fund balance. Uh, and then as the finance director said, um, projected to go back to the roughly five million dollars that was before that four point five was positive in there.
Thank you, Jom. The last, our, uh, last of our general fund, our restricted reserve is the emergency disaster fund. Uh, we are going to, uh, fix our balance to one, two point seven million dollars, which, uh, still below our target of three million dollars.
Yeah, it's important to note here that the estimated fund balance of just under two million dollars reflects the roughly one, one million dollars that we spent to repair the hillside at San Bruno Avenue that in, in near Glenview where we had the slide. Uh, and so, prior to that, uh, slide, we did have three million dollars and met the reserve target. Uh, we had an emergency, declared an emergency, had to fix the, the hillside to protect the integrity of San Bruno Avenue. However, the new revenue that you see, uh, in here is roughly, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand because the city attorney has been able to negotiate for a insurance reimbursement of a quarter of that million dollars. Uh, and so, we know that, uh, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars has already been designated as reimbursable, so we are projecting that as revenue in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, and, and so we can talk about that more, but, but that is why that line item does go up and that's why we're not at the policy target. Uh, it's also worth noting here that we had projected to use our emergency disaster fund for our COVID nineteen expenditures, but thankfully because of cares, um, and because of the Walmart sales tax sharing agreement and that revenue that we received as of current fiscal year for that agreement, we were not, we did not have to draw from our emergency disaster fund for our COVID nineteen expenditures. And so, that's why that balance, uh, is, is really only less of the million dollars that we had to spend on the Crestmore slide.
So all in all, they have about twenty-six million, three million as a general fund unrestricted reserve. Um, but we have two large deficits, um, in the city to come. I think these deficits coming from enterprise funds. Um, there's no other way to cover the enterprise fund but to take the general fund reserve. So we're seeing a, a fourteen point six million of deficit from city net. Um, we also have to go and have another deficit from Stormwater Fund by, uh, just over a million dollars. The total of all attributed, uh, reserve, net of the deficit dropped to ten point seven million dollars. That's the total, ten point seven million dollars that we can allocate, uh, without any destruction. Now, of course, we have another, uh, equipment reserve. That's the, the state of our city having put over the time to buy, to replace our agent equipment, agent vehicles. Uh, the, you know, this, the equipment reserve is going about three point three, uh, three point four million at the end of this year. I just wanted, uh, run that through attention. Typically, the city try to have everybody, every department allocate some money to equipment reserve. But as a budget, um, stating that budget stabilization method, uh, we haven't really done that, uh, for the last two years, including this, uh, the next upcoming, uh, fiscal year because this will just cause more strain on the department's budget.
Yeah.
In total, the net general fund reserve is about about fourteen point four million.
And so, it's worth pausing here, uh, just one more time. I don't want to take a lot of time, but, uh, former finance director, Keith, Keith Martini and I added this presentation, uh, about eight, eight years ago because, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, about, about two and a half years ago, uh, for our, um, uh, nineteen, twenty budget. Because while we meet the reserve target, in reality, the city net services deficit has utilized all of our general fund reserve. So the general fund reserve, as the finance director mentioned, um, by policy target should be a little bit more than what's shown there. Uh, so it should be roughly about twelve point, uh, seven million. So the city net deficit, essentially you, you use your entire general fund reserve on the city net deficit. So in order to have cash liquidity, what, what this shows is that we have to use our other, uh, unrestricted reserves and our equipment reserves in order to make sure we have that twelve or fourteen million dollars should something happen. Which is why, even though we have a three point three million dollar equipment reserve, we're being extremely conservative on expenditures out of our equipment reserve because it's essentially our liquidity. Uh, the same thing is true for our other unrestricted general fund reserves. Our, including that is our capital reserve. It is our liquidity, it is our safety, our safety net. It's extremely important to know that. Uh, and, and this also includes, uh, measure G fund balance. Having some fund balance in measure G is a part of those unrestricted reserves, so it helps us. Uh, and, and so that, that's an extremely important point that, um, uh, um, is, is, is critical and this portrait is critical. And we've shown it every, to the last two budget cycles and, and we'll continue to do that. Uh, the other sort of point I want to note here really quick is that if you went through the budget in detail, uh, we'll talk about it in a little bit. We do receive the ARA, American Rescue Plan Act revenues in June, so this current fiscal year and in June of next fiscal year. So you'll see a fund balance of six point nine million, um, in the balance. That is not included in these reserves, these reserve numbers. We cannot by treasury policies put that ARA money and count it as, as a part of our reserves. And so, when you look at the total numbers, sort of large numbers, you'll see, well, where's that six point nine? It's not in these numbers. And so, it's, it's, it's important to note that it can't be in these numbers. Uh, and we cannot use those funds to, to, to help solve this problem. Okay, uh, can you please, Tim?
Okay, um, so this is just to summarize, um, what we can use for capital, uh, programs. You know, uh, part of the general fund reserve is for capital, that's a point nine point, uh, four million that we talked about in earlier slides. And we also have some money for, um, development impact fee, which the city, um, implemented in two thousand nineteen. Right now, we, uh, at next year, we're expecting the fund, the balance of that to be a hundred sixty-seven million. We also have another, living over a million dollars on GANAC PAC and then one hundred point six million on measure A and then about seven hundred fifteen thousand from measure W. Started the money we can use for capital projects. In total, it's about, um, twelve point nine million.
Yeah, but this is also here to note that while there is twelve point nine million, again, when we talk about the general fund capital reserve, last year that was five million. It's only a little bit over nine million because of the YouTube community benefit money that is in the CIP budget to be expended on the RAP to, to close that budget. And so, you can really take that four point five out of this for, for sort of long-term portrait. Um, and, and it's also worth noting that gas tax fund balance, uh, a million dollars at a measure A fund balance of one point five and a measure W fund balance of seven hundred thousand, not a lot of money. It doesn't give you a lot of money to pay rules and, 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 uh, and utilize those funds for larger projects. And so, uh, this is also in conjunction with having a fund balance in measure G, our go-to if we're doing a road project and let's say hit something and a half a million dollars over budget, right? We're going to go to these fund balances and pull from there. And so, these funds, these, this is here under continuing challenges because fund balances these low are concerns to the general fund. Um, uh, and, and we all know how expensive road projects are, uh, and, and some of our other capital improvement projects. And we're just not able, uh, you'll see when we go through our capital budget that we use our gas tax, we use it for, 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 um, gas tax eligible staff that do street work as well as we use it for projects. Same thing with measure A and measure W, we need those for projects. So the annual revenue something gets spent. Uh, and we just don't have enough to hold, uh, a significant, a significant amount in fund balance. And that is a concern. Okay, let us talk of positions. Uh, we'll give a historical portrait since, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, so we're going back a little bit over twenty years. Uh, we will give a four-year position history by fun. We'll do a summary of our full-time positions and then we'll, we'll give a summary of, of the reductions and the proposed restoration. So, uh, let's go through this. The, the brown line is our population, um, moderately increasing over the last, uh, twenty-one years or twenty-two years. Um, but our, our FTE line has gone in the wrong direction. Uh, so significant, uh, reductions, uh, both, uh, after the, the doc, uh, at the dot com bus, uh, as well as the great recession, uh, so we, we, we clearly see it. Uh, cuts that happened, uh, for the, my mouse is freezing a little bit. Uh, cuts that happened at, at the dot com bus, not fully restored. Cuts that happened after the great recession, uh, just got to be fully restored. Now we're back down, uh, due to COVID nineteen. And so, the, the sort of general conversation that you hear of, uh, and, and that I know a lot of you guys know that, uh, there are fewer FTEs now than there were twenty years ago. Uh, and the, the city does not have the personnel resources to keep up with the demand. And we all know the demands, um, and the needs, uh, are, are much greater than, uh, now than they were twenty years ago because of the same, uh, corrupt age. Um, and so, uh, this is our, 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 our personnel rent. Uh, and, uh, it is why we are looking to, to use some of the, uh, federal, um, assistance dollars to create a path to, uh, restore some, but not all, as well as do the portion of, of, of measure G to restore, uh, some, some, some of the key positions. Uh, and so, this, this is where we are, sort of on a trend line. Uh, and our population has increased. Uh, we, we have, um, um, at this point not recovered, uh, and are just about less than ten positions away from where we were at, uh, in, in twenty-eleven, uh, at the great recession. So if we've been wrong over the last four years, um, two hundred and sixty-four FTEs, right now baseline budget, two hundred and eighty-three. Um, one hundred and sixty-eight are in the general fund. Less than half of it is E in federal revenue. Uh, internal service, IT, central garage, building facilities, uh, uh, fifteen positions or fifteen point five. And our enterprise funds, city net, water, wastewater and some stormwater allocations, uh, fifty-nine. High chart summary, uh, largest FTE count is of course our police department and our fire, uh, our, our two twenty-four hour operation departments. Uh, general, uh, government, uh, twenty-three, that's your, um, administrative services, uh, city manager, finance department, IT department. Um, actually, IT isn't, uh, internal services, it's finance and city manager, um, uh, HR, city clerk and city attorney. City net services, uh, our, our, our water-related enterprises, forty FTEs, important to note. Um, and it's all important to note that it's shown separately here, but, uh, public works, engineering, eleven point five. If you're looking at the total for our public works, you have to take the eleven point five and add it to the forty, um, for stormwater. So our public works department is just over fifty FTEs. Uh, community services, twenty-five, uh, CD control. So, how, summary pre-COVID, two hundred and sixty-five positions, uh, a reduction of twenty-three positions, or twenty-four positions, I'm sorry, uh, what's, uh, my words are wrong, the voice is right. Uh, twenty-four positions reduced last fiscal year, uh, eight eliminated, uh, sixteen frozen. Uh, we are recommending the, uh, restoration of twelve, uh, leaving twelve, uh, uh, to be not restored and, uh, proposed enhancement of six FTEs, uh, tied to key strategic initiatives, um, as well as in, uh, significant, uh, or a number of these positions in our building and planning departments, uh, A, um, and tied to council strategic initiatives for economic development and, and fire prevention and, um, wild, wildfire, uh, protection. So we'll, we'll, we'll go through all these. Okay, proposed use of general fund of measure G revenue. Why don't I pause here? I know we've been talking for just over an hour. How are we, how are we doing, council? Are we, we doing okay?
I see a very attentive and engaged council.
All right, no, no eye nodding, no, no one pulled out a pillow, thank you. Okay, so we're on section six, so this is our top ten. Uh, measure G revenue, proposed expenditures, we'll give an overview of the measure G. We'll talk about the proposed uses, um, uh, in the current year and the proposed uses in the upcoming year. I'm noticing that upcoming year should say twenty-one, twenty-two, not twenty-one, but that's a title that we'll correct later. Uh, and then the proposed funding plan, uh, for positions. So council knows this, we'll go through this really quick. Capital district sales tax measure, uh, operates differently than our revenue sales tax, not charged on the same thing. It is by legal definition a used transactions tax. We've talked more about that, but I know you've heard that before. Uh, took effect April one, twenty-twenty. We have our citizens revenue, uh, uh, revenue measure oversight committee. They have not met on these proposed expenditures. We are, uh, attempting to schedule a meeting with them the third week in June. Uh, and so know that they will meet and by, by your action time, uh, provided with the recommendation. Uh, initial projected revenue, important to note, was four million, right? And then measure And then Measure, and then COVID hits. And so we are experiencing, of course, reduced revenue. So the first year it took effect, really right at the beginning of COVID nineteen, if you will, and at the tail end of the nineteen fiscal year, but we were actually projecting to receive, I believe the number was eight hundred and fifty thousand that year and we only received a hundred and fifty thousand in nineteen twenty. And then in the current fiscal year, the revenue projection, which we're going to meet is two point nine million. It's important to note that these are actually helped by construction as a used transaction tax. During COVID nineteen, we had Walmart do a tentative group, I think nearly twenty million dollars of tentative groups. Now, not all of that are materials that are delivered to the site, but when materials are delivered to the site, we do get that used transactions tax. So construction does help us with Measure G revenue. And so the revenue that we will be projecting or that we are projecting in the coming fiscal year is three point five million. So half a million shy of what the annual projection was. For the current budget year, there was a total of two point six million dollars of expenditures. As you know, unfortunately, due to the rapid decline in general fund revenues and the need to cut deeply, but wanting to preserve some critical positions, we did utilize two million dollars of Measure G in twenty twenty-one. There was also sign replacement, partial funding for a parts manager enhancement, a pool facility, A JAC repair and a street light pole program funding, leaving a predictability fund balance of four hundred and sixty-two thousand. We're high on here, knowing we go into the capital improvement program, we'll get details about these capital improvement projects. So for the next fiscal year, let's, you begin with the beginning fund balance of four hundred and sixty-two thousand. You add the revenue projection and then our projected expenditures are as follows. So one point four million in capital improvement road projects, three hundred thousand tied to a enhancement request, also tied to a council strategic initiative for implementation of our now-street state employee position, funding of eight hundred and four thousand. Contribution to the general fund fund balance of six hundred thousand, as we talked about, to bring that initial fund balance to two million dollars. And so proposed uses of three point one million, leaving a ending fund balance of eight hundred and fifty eight thousand. And so we are planning to work with the Measure G committee and our engineering staff for additional road projects upon the Measure G, should there be that remaining balance of eight fifty-seven. It's also important to note that when we, again, talked about having sort of pots of financial resources to use, we don't want to deplete the Measure G fund balance to zero, so having some level of fund balance there is important. It's not the type of fund where we need a reserve target for because it doesn't fund those type of expenditures, but it is important to have some revenue there that if there's a critical need or a special project or if we get a grant and we need a grant match, right, we have a source to pull that money from. So we'll be further analyzing the remaining fund balance and developing a recommendation and talking to the budget. So next, let's talk about positions. And I'll have a high level of these positions, but my point here in talking through the positions is to actually talk through the financials and the recommended structure to provide some enhanced services to the community and restore a portion of those positions, but do it in a way where, one, it is financially sound and the fund does not bear those costs perpetually. And so what we've created in our polling is essentially a three-year funding plan to fund these seven positions from Measure G, where in year one, so let me take us through this chart and just provide a little orientation. So these are the seven positions, it's the economic development manager, a police officer, firefighter, a fire inspector, a public works maintenance worker, a park maintenance worker and additional part-time money for the library because we cut their part-time budget due to COVID nineteen and as they return services, they need their part-time budget. And we will go through what all of these are and in the rationale, we have the departmental presentations. But there's a cost of each of these positions in the, in twenty-one dollars. And then there's the amount that we're budgeting in twenty twenty-one. Important to note, for some of these positions, for example, our economic development manager position, fully loaded, is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. However, we're only budgeting a hundred and seventeen thousand, that's because there's recruitment time. We know that that position is not going to be filled and funded on July one. So there will be a three to four month recruitment process for the position. So based on our recruitment plan, we're only budgeting a hundred and seventeen thousand. However, for some of the positions, like our police and our firefighters, we know that there are academies. We know that there's, actually, there's fire, there are fire academies actually beginning really soon and police officers, we have an open and continuous recruitment for police officers and they believe that if the position is restored, they can fill it all instantly. And well as, and so for the inspector, same thing, not budgeted, it has full amount due to recruitment, et cetera. And so the way this, the way the methodology is, is in year one, so twenty twenty-one, Measure G would pay one hundred percent and it would decrease by thirty-three percent for each of the next two fiscal years. So by the fourth fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, Measure G would be paying nothing. And the pickup, it's essentially picked up by the general fund baseline. And so the general fund baseline is picking up essentially thirty-three percent each year for roughly three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. So by twenty-four, twenty-five, the general fund is paying the full cost of the positions. And so what this matches is that over this three-year cycle, for these seven position restorations, Measure G would pay approximately one point seven million and the general fund would pay one point nine million. But after three years, the general fund is bearing the full cost. And so that's a gradual ramp up and we know based on our projections and based on what we're seeing this year with three million dollars of greater baseline revenue growth, essentially what we're including in the long-range forecast is to gradually build these positions back over three years. And so it's a way to both provide some restoration and service now, but also do it in a manner where we're not living off Measure G perpetually for these positions and slowly build it back to the general fund. So with that, I'm saying no, so people are following, so I'll keep going. And so now that-
Mr. Mayor?
I've been mindful of, there it is. We have two folks, Councilmember Mason, put her hand up and then Vice Mayor, Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask whether this budget from Measure G has already gone through the committee and if so, where that's available to view?
So we have not gone to the committee. We are scheduling a meeting with the committee in the thirtieth of June and we will bring that to the council.
Okay, I know that there was some questions last year raised by one of the committee members around using these funds for salaries. So that's going to definitely be, I think, a conversation as we move forward with this budget.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. An hour and twenty minutes into this presentation and I was wondering when we were going to be able to step in and ask some questions. We could wait longer if that's your preference, but this usage of Measure G funding is pretty important. And should I have my questions now or do we wait for later? Particularly, I'm looking at sheet B nine from our proposed budget. And my first question would be, if we're receiving four million dollars from A R P A funding and we're only having a million of that spent in this budget and we're also spending a million dollars in Measure G, why go to Measure G when A R P A seems more appropriate in my view?
Sure, absolutely. Councilmember Medina, let me first address the first thing you said, which is an hour and a half in, just not able to ask a question. I'm sorry, I thought we were clear in the beginning, ask a question. Raise your hand, don't have to wait, we want you to ask questions. So if you have any questions that you felt like you didn't get to ask, know that we, we're open to questions and we want you to ask them. With regard to your question about why utilize Measure G versus going to A R P, American Rescue Plan Act funds, we can, we can talk about that, I'll do it briefly really quick, by just also highlighting that there are position restorations that are recommended for the American Rescue Act. And the total amount, this is a four-year ramp down, due to those expenditures have to be committed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And so in the recommendations we have here of the total eight million dollars that we're receiving to restore the general fund, we are recommending at this point five point seven million. And so that leaves two point two billion unallocated of A R P A funds. So absolutely, the city council could request to utilize the unallocated A R P A funds for those restorations. But we did propose a balance between the American Rescue funds and Measure G as though to, for example, through the proposed budget, we are restoring two police officers, two firefighters. So there's one police officer from Measure G, one police officer from American Rescue Act money, one firefighter from American Rescue Act, one police officer. So of the total position restorations, there is one point seven million, so call it one million seven hundred and fifty thousand proposed to come from Measure G. Absolutely, the council could direct that we utilize the A R P A funds and so that would do two point two minus one point seven five and there would be sufficient money to do that and leave the Measure G unallocated for position. The proposed budget does a balance, but that is absolutely, that can be done.
Continue.
That's fine, I just wanted to chime in there. I'm really, I guess I feel that we, even though Measure G had a wide range of items that funding could have been spent for, for those different items, I'm just hesitant on, on just saying yes. I guess, how much? And this is really difficult and I do appreciate the effort in putting together a complicated budgeting plan and to address the easing off of that reliance. In that, in that three-year plan, is the intent that some of that funding would be reallocated back and those funds would be replenished? I guess that's my first question.
So we have not included funds to replenish Measure G or these proposed expenditures or the two million dollars that were used in the current year. And that's not that there's not a desire, unfortunately, there's actually just not the revenue to do that. We are, even with baseline expenditures, we need an allocation from somewhere to support our general fund fund balance. And so there's not the surplus revenue at this point to begin a repayment plan or, and that is not proposed at this juncture.
That's a good answer. So when we first tapped into Measure G, as we're, as COVID was spiraling out of control and there were so many unknowns, I think the council exhibited restraint and as we're getting out of, as the future's looking brighter with the less impact of COVID, I just wanted to still, it feels it's more appropriate to be using the A R P A funding since it's directly related to the reasons why we have shortfalls and to pay for those positions. Switching on over to new conversation about Measure G, how much funding, and I think it's probably very little, has been spent on actually the roads, the sidewalks, the things that people, most people that I've spoken to identify should be spent being fixed by Measure G?
So I just went back to the allocations in the current budget, twenty twenty-one. And so in the current budget, there were no allocations for Measure G revenue to go towards street rehabilitation projects. If you recall, when we adopted this budget, there was a, the council did ask staff to share their projects that need additional funds to look toward Measure G so some Measure G can go to road projects. When we have our detailed C I P presentation, what you will hear and know is that all of our road projects that were funded in twenty twenty-one did not move forward. And so we will actually be rolling over those fund balances to the next fiscal year. And so we actually, because of our staffing, we are down, I believe, three engineers, the two that would work on these road projects. We were not able to move forward with our regular street rehabilitation and road projects in the current fiscal year. And so that money will be rolled forward and put with this proposed allocation of one point four million so we can do road projects with both last year's money and this year's money and next fiscal year, twenty twenty-one. And so we can, personally, that came from the budget, it's in the total, but I'll find that total and provide that to you. The prior year amount, the work that wasn't done with all the new allocations. But there are substantial funds that are dedicated to street projects that we're looking to make progress on in twenty twenty-one.
That's a good answer too. I just didn't want to hold back the question because they're connected. And it's, it's a difficult process and the last comment that I'll bring up is the funding of the six hundred thousand from Measure G to go to fill in a hole. I, without knowing specifically what hole it's filling, I, I'm not really in favor of that, of specifically what projects. Is it just to have the money in the reserve? I'm not comfortable with that, so those are my comments for now.
And staff can take a number of, look at that. At the end of the day, it can certainly be allocated to key private, key private access items to fund. Mr. Mayor, are there any hands, are there more?
Yes, there are. Councilmember Mason and Councilmember Hamilton, please.
So just thinking to Measure G for a moment-
So just thinking to Measure G for a moment. I'd have to watch it again, but my recollection is that that council did direct the use of those funds and that the response for street repair, and that staff came back and said that there was an allotment that needed to be saved for some, for what, I don't remember the exact reason. But I believe council then instructed or directed the city manager to use whatever was remaining for street repair. So that something went to street repair, which was what was advertised for Measure G to pass. So what I'm hearing is that it sounds like some of this money, there was some money and it's getting rolled over to this year. And I just want to make sure that that's right, that something from last year is going to street repair in the first year that Measure G was actually implemented. And then my second question is that this actually goes back a few slides. But the amount of money that had been needed for the short-term rentals to start is that just, have we just not gotten to that? Because even if it's $100,000 as a revenue stream that pays for that part-time library assistant that we just saw. So I am curious to know where we are with that in the budget and what the plans are for the short-term rental revenue to start coming in.
Sure. Let's back up really quick. So with Measure G approval last year, council did request that staff work with the committee to identify road projects that could be used for the projected fund balance. What staff articulated is, we would do that. We also wanted to wait to see how Measure G revenue was coming in. Because while we felt comfortable with the projections, we wanted to make sure that there was going to be sufficient fund balance to go toward additional projects. None of the road projects, our engineers, staff can correct me, none of our street projects that were even funded in 2021, the current fiscal year, moved forward due to staff concerns. Staff worked on water, sewer, and other initiatives like acquiring the 1.2 million dollar grant for the side blast stormwater project. As well as the, many of these projects were led by the former director. The former director spent the longest time over the last 12 months engaged in the stormwater. And so rationale being, it is sort of is what it is. None of our street projects moved forward. And so there wasn't a project to go back to allocate Measure G funds to accomplish. And even until the residual fund balance of 462,000, and I believe we articulated this then, actually doesn't get you much in a street rehabilitation project. And so it was visioned to be an add-on to a, like a slurry sale project where we were slurring additional road. But because we didn't do any additional project, there was nothing to add-on to. And so what we're looking to do is to take what was allocated in this fiscal year, which should be rolled over, add 1.4 million to it here from Measure G and execute those projects in 2021, 22. In addition, there's another 865,000 fund balance. We could apply a portion of that to additional projects. But we, sort of candidly, I think with our staffing shortages and both not having a, at this point, a permanent public works director and one of the deputy directors serving as the interim director, our ability to execute on this 1.4 plus what we're rolling over, is going to be a challenge. Because we're also down two engineers that would work on these projects. And so we have some work internally to do to be able to execute on those projects. And I would actually say that that is sort of our most critical issue right now is staffing up or contracting out and being able to execute on the money that we already have left in it and this 1.4 that we're proposing to allocate in addition.
Councilmember Hamilton? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a second. Part of the question around the short term.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, short-term rentals. So why don't I stop the talking then? I'll have our city attorney, Mark, pop on to talk about short-term rentals. So council knows that short-term rentals, what the project that was led, it's actually a three of our departments are involved, both our community, development department, our finance department, and our city attorney's office. Mark, will you come on and just talk, I know that there's the conversation about HCL, but will you give an update on the legal framework? And where we, where we're going to reach out to the host platforms with council?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So there's a couple of aspects of this that are interrelated and somewhat complex and have required collaboration between a variety of departments that are engaged in many other matters, I guess is the short way to put it. So the first aspect of this is that platforms under our ordinance should be required to remit the tax directly to the city. And so thereby obviating the need to go after all of the individual hosts. However, the related portion of that is that our consultants that we've been working with on that particular issue are recommending that that they be retained to recover the tax from the individual hosts and not necessarily from the platforms. So the finance department, in the midst of all of their budget preparations, have been trying to work with our consultants to figure out what is the right answer to that question. And that question has not yet been fully answered at this time. So staff is still trying to evaluate what is the best process to recover the tax. And then the third part of this that's interrelated is the regulatory compliance. And by that, I mean not paying the TOT. That's not what that refers to. Instead, that refers to the compliance with the city's regulatory ordinances that the city council adopted to make sure that there's an application and that the fees, not the taxes, but the fees that are paid for compliance with that ordinance are, you know, are paid as part of the ongoing process of reviewing those rentals. So there is really quite a bit of work that has been required to tilt that program up in both finance and community and economic development. And while there has been some progress made, it has not been completed.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton, please. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. So this started out as a question, and now it's more of a opinion and statement, given what was already said and the answers to the questions from the vice mayor and councilmember Mason. I think that we should be leveraging the ARPA funds instead of Measure G wherever possible, especially for salaries. Measure G was sold to the voters primarily with the message that the funds would be used to fix the roads. And the purpose of the ARPA funding is to make us whole again after, from the losses that we suffered through the pandemic. I completely agree with the strategy to transition funding for those positions from the one-time funds gradually over to the general fund over a multi-year time span. I think that's very smart. But I think that ARPA needs to be the place that we start with to fund those positions. My other question went back to the slide where you were showing the multi-year revenue and expenditure projection. And I was wondering, I know that those projections are conservative. And, but I just wanted to confirm that they at least in part account for all the new revenue sources we are working to put in place. The user fee increase, short-term rentals, like we just discussed, cannabis, the other sources of revenue that we're exploring are, is at least some of those expected revenues factored in when you look at that long-term projection?
Sorry, sorry, we were all muted. Thank you for your question, Councilmember Hamilton. The answer to your question is no. So the anticipated future revenues from policy items that have not yet been taken are not included in the forecast. Cannabis is the best example. We have not included cannabis revenue in our long-range forecast because we have not yet had the conversation and the decisions on what cannabis businesses are we going to allow? Where will they be? Are we doing retail only? How many retail permits? Are we doing cultivation? Where, et cetera? There's so many decisions that are built into that policy-stated conversation that we have not projected in revenue for those policy decisions that have yet to be made. With regard to short-term rentals, that $100,000 projected, I do not know if that's in the out years. I know that it's not in the 2021, 22. I do think that we can update the forecast, but it's in the out years. Because that hasn't been a policy decision, that hasn't been made and we're working on implementation of it. So I hope that's an answer to your question.
How about the user fees?
User fees, yes. So master fee schedule revenue has been included in the 2021 budget and in the out years. So the new user fee schedule that is a part of the proposed budget and that you are set to act on when you act on the proposed budget are included. I just kind of provide a direction on the level and we include those.
Got it. Thank you.
Just on, I know we're maybe coming up on two hours and council, yes, we will be taking a break. So no worries there for everybody. And again, first, it is a complicated process and budget. And I just, as a reminder, too, so I appreciate staff bringing things forward. Measure G is one of those items you're looking at, what can be done and how do we achieve and continue to move and grow? Going back to the ballot measure, to my knowledge, it was, shall the city of San Bruno's measure to fund city services/facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire prevention services, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression, investigation, pothole, street repair, increasing parking supply upgrading, park and other city facilities? And so it certainly is in there. So I certainly don't want to say to staff, they shouldn't give us these options and they shouldn't bring forward these ideas and various opportunities for us to figure out what might be best or not. So I did want to mention that. And then city manager, let me ask, because I don't see any hands up at this moment. What would you like to do? Would you like to proceed further? Do you want to, would you wish a break? You tell me.
If council wants a break, we will take a break. But staff would like to proceed forward. And when we proceed forward, whether we take a break or not, what I would like to do is go through the next section, which is the ARPA funds. Talk through that, talk through the positions I recommended there. Again, at a high level, because we're going to go through it at the department level for the department to articulate a little further. But then also just come back, because if we have the majority of council that wants to provide some direction on removing the Measure G positions and utilizing the ARPA funds there, we can do that and bring you back an option that aligns with that. So if that's okay, I'd like to go forward and then read us that question.
Okay, so you'd like to just discuss the ARPA funds and then have more dialogue in regards to that and then Measure G? And then, is that what you'd like to want? Okay, then please proceed.
Really? Okay, so in the American Rescue Plan Act section, we'll give an overview, we'll talk about the proposed uses. There are capital improvement projects that are projected to be funded with American Rescue Plan Act funds as well as positions, and then we'll get summary. So allocation to San Bruno, 8 million, maybe there's some running in there, but that is the number based on the federal allocation. Pay in two installments, the first installment is due this month, in June of half, so a little bit over 4 million. The next is due in 2022, and I mentioned this before. But essentially, between now and next fiscal year, we will receive all of the revenue and have to expend it by 12/31/26, but it has to be obligated by 12/31/24. Summary eligible uses are there. Respond to the COVID-19 emergency and address economic effects, which is what we've been talking about. There's a premium pay ability there. There is also the ability to essentially cover the revenue loss that you've experienced from COVID-19, and we'll talk about that. As well as the specific ability to use it on investments for water, sewer, and raw man. I want to now ask our finance director to take us through this slide because there's a analysis spelled out by the Federal Treasury on how to calculate your revenue loss for American Rescue Plan Act monetary uses, so.
So first, there is a spelling error. The first word is ARPA, not ARPA. Sorry about that. Correct it if you'd like. So nothing about a month ago, Treasury Department came out with a guideline to calculate the revenue loss. Basically, the reason for the calculation is all industry-received ARPA funding can use the money to recover, to restore services which caused by the revenue loss in COVID year. And the guideline is that we can, we use the three COVID years, which is the fiscal year 18, 19, general fund revenue. That's a pure operating revenue minus any kind of reimbursement or transfers. And to calculate, using an increase rate of 4.1% as the base percentage decided by Treasury Department for all the historical increase for the last three years until our rate is higher. And we calculate our rate, our rate is actually 5.38%. So our rate is quite a bit higher than the baseline Treasury Department provided. So we calculated using the baseline revenue from general fund at 18, 19, which is 46.7 million, and then increased at a 5.38% annual rate. And then to compare with the budget or forecast, to see how much revenue loss we're actually having. Either some of the numbers, the 18, 19, 20 numbers are the actual numbers. And the 20, 21, 20, 21 numbers are close to actual, but in the other years are either the budget number or the forecasted number. So for the last two years, meaning the COVID era from fiscal 19, 22, 20, 21, we're actually calculating our loss in general fund revenue is 13.2 million. But up to the fiscal year 2022, 23, our cumulative loss will be actually close to 27.5 million dollars. Based on that formula, what we see from ARPA funding is substantially lower than we are actually in current end-of-year loss. So with that, I'll hand the
So at a high level, when your constituents ask how much revenue have we lost from COVID-19, today it's over 13 million dollars. And we're projecting nearly a $30 million loss or 27.5 million loss until fiscal year 22, 23. And so that's important, right? And so because we have essentially lost more than we were allocated, we can use that full allocation for eligible expenditures. And our administrative process to do that is actually made smoother. However, you may remember that I said earlier, we just can't put that money into our reserves because that's actually prohibited. And so even though our loss is greater than the money we receive, our expenditures still have to lie to the Treasury, the expenditure outlined in the Treasury regulations. And so that's how we're proceeding. So proposed uses, council will know, we recent, the city recently allocated 290,000 to SFC's strong fund. So council took that action and funded 29 businesses to receive a $10,000 grant. So council took that action, uh, and funded twenty nine businesses to receive a ten thousand dollar grant. Uh, uh, that check was, uh, actually not too long ago, uh, and still those businesses will start to receive those funds, so. The proposed, in the proposed budget, there's a just under one point eight, uh, or one point seven five eight million of proposed expenditures in the current year. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for capital improvement projects and one million in position funding. So let's talk a little bit about that. Uh, channel one upgrades, which also aligns with the city council strategic initiative is, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand that's upgrading our, our channel one. Uh, so when people are at home seeing this, uh, it will be in high definition. Uh, as council knows, when you look at it on the computer, you're looking at, in high def. But, uh, because our equipment, um, has not been upgraded, we have to actually downgrade the signal. And so unfortunately, people that will be watching this at home and on channel one probably will not be able to read what we're showing right now. Um, and so it is, and important for us to upgrade, uh, uh, the backend infrastructure as well as the, the cameras for once we're back remote, uh, so we can broadcast in high definition. But that has been unfunded, um, in the city for quite some time. And so we are proposing to expand that at the American Rescue Funds. Uh, upgrading our E O C, uh, new equipment, new, uh, 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 new infrastructure in the basement of City Hall for, for our E O C. A disaster recovery plan, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand this year, uh, with a total of three fifty over the next two years. And then our enterprise resource planning, our E R P system. Beginning that effort this year, we mentioned to, uh, to the council that we are participating in a, um, in a multiple county shared services R P. Uh, but these systems are, are expensive. Uh, we're estimating nearly two million dollars. Um, we'll, we'll talk more about, uh, what an E R P system is. I know it sounds like a lot for technology. But know that larger cities spend twenty million dollars on their E R P. Uh, and so it really is a financial backbone of everything we do here. Uh, and, uh, our system is approaching the delight and will no longer be supported by the vendor. And so an upgrade is not a, uh, it's not a, it's not a want, it's truly a need. And outside of these funds, we really don't have the resources to do that. And so we're looking to, uh, begin that effort with some initial seed funding and then leverage, uh, money over a few years to actually accomplish that goal. And so, uh, these are the positions that we are recommending, uh, be funded through A R P A. Uh, it is a information technology associate. You'll hear about that both from the police department and the fire department and I T. It's an I T position, but it is keenly focused on our, uh, our public safety, uh, tech, technology infrastructure. Again, one police and one firefighter restoration, uh, a new associate slash assistant several in there. Uh, that is a principal planner. Unfortunately, the table didn't print, um, totally, but it's just a principal planner. Uh, public works maintenance worker, deputy community services director, uh, noting that this position, uh, fully funded is a hundred and ninety four thousand. But there are positions favorites in that department, uh, of about a hundred and three thousand, so the, the due cost is ninety one thousand. This also, uh, was a recommendation in the business plan as we prepare for the new RAC. Uh, and there are other positions in that department that are not being stored. Uh, a public works maintenance worker and then support time. This is a three, eight, is a, I'm sorry, a four year, um, funding path, so the general fund will pick up twenty five percent each year. And so at the end, it is projected that American Rescue, uh, Act Fund will pay two point seven million. And the general fund will pick up, uh, three, uh, just over three million. And by twenty five, twenty six, the general fund will be paying one hundred percent of the cost. Uh, so roughly picking up approximately on average about three hundred thousand, three hundred twenty thousand a year, um, on an annual basis, picking up at twenty five percent. Same exact methodology as, uh, measure G. And so in total, the projected, uh, American Rescue Plan Act Fund of just over eight million proposed through twenty four, twenty five is five point seven, leaving two point two unallocated. The number for the general fund was one point seven. Uh, and so there would be sufficient funds if we move the, uh, not general fund, measure G. The measure G recommendation was one point seven, so let's just figure here. And so if, if council did want us to, um, move these to the, to, to a American Rescue Fund, we can do that. Um, and show that, uh, in the presentation that we provide, uh, to you on Zoom date. So, uh, why don't I pause there and ask, uh, if council would desire to have a discussion around that topic?
Any, uh, comments, questions after we've had both those? Council member Hamilton?
Uh, I just, I mean, I already, I already made my statement on this. So, yes, I think, I, I think we need to have discussion about and, and provide direction about moving the, um, these, these positions from measure G to A R P A. And I've already said that, yes, I think, that I do think we should do that.
Other questions? Uh, Vice Mayor Medina?
Um, I, I agree with Councilman Hamilton.
Any other, uh, common colleagues? Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Salazar?
I, I would just say that I, I concur with, uh, with the others in terms of, uh, looking at balancing that a little bit, uh, better. Uh, I know that, uh, as the mayor stated, that there were a lot of things, um, that were, uh, discussed in, in doing that. But, uh, as the vice mayor brought up, there's no plan for reallocating those funds or, or, you know, putting those funds back at any, any time in the near future. And, uh, I think there was, uh, a, a strong desire from the community to, uh, put some of those dollars back into the roads and to visible projects. And so committing all of that to, um, F T positions is, um, I think less in, in the spirit of what was, uh, what was promised. Um, and also even, even looking at, uh, you know, committing all of the, uh, ARPA funds to this. Uh, it, I'm, I'm a little concerned about how much, uh, how much we're burdening general fund going forward. Uh, I mean, there's a, a four year escape plan, but, um, there's a lot of assumptions being there, being made there about, um, what kind of, what kind of position we're going to be in financially in four years. And that we'll be able to fully absorb all that. If, if we're not there, um, we're gonna have to shed all these positions again. So, um, definitely some concern there in, in using these one time funds.
As, as far as for myself, I just wanted to make it clear too, based on the measure, staff had every right to bring forward, uh, various options and ideas. Um, I, we all know most folks want to see roads repaired. Um, they believe, a lot of folks, I believe, felt that this measure would help to, to solidify that and to see that move at a faster pace. Um, I think the community was gracious enough to pass this for us. I think the community was understanding during COVID times, when the monies were reallocated in a very difficult time, which would have been much worse. So I do have concerns as far as us, um, saying, well, now we're diverting it, not diverting, but we're using it as it was allowed for these other, uh, usable items. Um, thus far though, we haven't really done a lot on the roads. So, uh, what I will say is also we have an oversight committee too. So in essence, by us saying, if it's just flat out no, um, then in essence, their, their role, there really is nothing for them to review or to, um, have commentary on. I mean, some of this, the fire inspector, I mean, like it, it makes that, it hits the mark specifically. And I know that's long term and that's helpful to the community and it's, uh, all that work that we've been doing and stuff. So, uh, I, I think city manager clearly, I, uh, I'm okay, I know I want to speak for Councilmember Mason, but I think she would have been on the same page as well as, um, having concern with us going back in, in a large way to measure G for that larger appropriations. So, uh, city manager, comments, thoughts?
Uh, so thank you for that, and we will, um, uh, take a look at this recommendation and, and make some adjustments. Thank you. So if we move forward, I think we're, we locate our time, not rate. Uh, capital improvement projects, we will speed through this. So this is section eight in our top ten. Um, so there are a total of eight hundred and four capital improvement projects to be funded in this budget cycle. Twenty four roads, twenty eight water, sixteen wastewater for stormwater, fifteen facilities, eight parks, one city net, two police, six technology, uh, all across the state. Uh, not nearly enough, but, uh, there, there are capital, uh, projects funded in the budget. I will go through this, um, in detail. I was going to turn it to the finance director, but we will have a whole second on capital projects. Uh, but I, I will point out something really, um, clear here, which is, uh, note that a number, this number is high, uh, for the, the, uh, the, uh, carryover and the project funding. And so a, a lot of this, uh, reflects, or, or this number right here, uh, is our new RAC. And so that is, uh, the, the, the RAC funding that will be coming to the council. Um, it's also worth noting that for water and wastewater, we are carrying over, uh, over thirty million dollars in appropriations. So those are projects that are funded but have not been completed. One of the things when we see our water and wastewater long term. I wasn't talking to you, Siri. Um, uh, one of the things we'll see when we go through our water and wastewater funds is that we may be budgeting, this is, uh, me talking sort of as, uh, analysis for the city manager's seat. Um, more money in our projects than we can actually realistically get done in a given year. And so we're going to work with staff or, uh, I'm committed to work with staff while actually stretching out our capital project allotments and do a little bit better job planning for the expenditures in the year that we're actually going to do the work. Whereas when you start a project, fully funding that project and holding that money in your C I P. There's a nice balance in budgeting between ensuring that you're going to have the money when you need it. Uh, and fully funding the project on day one, it may be a five year project or saying that you're going to spend ten million dollars this year when, when reality based on workload and, and the plan of that project, you're actually only going to spend three million. And so know that we have, we're carrying over a lot of money in our enterprise accounts, but, but we'll work on that. Okay, fire plan, we'll talk about this. Uh, now let's talk about funding of council strategic initiatives. So, uh, this is, uh, in two areas. So one, we are, we have, uh, proposed to budget nearly one point four million dollars to fund, uh, items that align to your strategic initiatives. What are those? Implementation of the downtown sea skate, channel one, we talked about that. Wildfire risk mitigation. This is two items. This is one, an, an inspector and another hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you'll see the capital improvement program to actually have a city budget to start to address some of our city areas where we need to do some tree thinning, uh, and have the, the physical space. We've been able to start our program utilizing, uh, the three million dollars that, uh, the court awarded for Crestmore Canyon and work with other agencies like, uh, Cal, uh, Caltrans. But in the capital budget, you'll see an allocation for us to start addressing, uh, more, more in, in definitely some of our city areas. There's economic development manager, the water, uh, uh, rate study, downtown market meters and weight binding signage. Uh, there was already a hundred fifty, uh, we added seventy five, uh, to that budget. Affordable housing program implementation, grant rider, campus regulation development, newspaper racks you already funded, um, the trash cans and, uh, enhanced holidays before that I know council has asked for. Uh, as well as just really quickly with this, this work of noting that there are other things that, uh, are not in here uh, that are either funded or plan to be funded. One, Centennial Plaza, you funded that at your last meeting. The other is trash cans, you funded that, um, as well. And then district elections will actually be coming to you in June because we need to do that work, uh, and, and get, uh, take that contract, uh, underway, uh, in the current fiscal year. So that's why that's not in here. There are also other initiatives that are anticipated to require funding, but what, that we have not proposed in the budget. And so you may be wondering why. It's not that we disagree with you and, and, and didn't want to allocate funds. It's that a number of these need a little bit more work, uh, so we can come up with a realistic estimate. Um, or, or we simply don't have money. So the east west street, uh, sweeping alliance, we know that it's a high priority of council, was voted as a high priority of council. It will be on S A's work program. We just don't know how much that's going to cost. We know that there will be added costs, uh, for enforcement of, of, of street sweeping and cost to implement signs across the city for street sweeping. We, we, we have the direction from council to look at it. We could have done the work to do it. And so, uh, we didn't feel comfortable, uh, projecting a number, knowing that you need to do the work and come back uh, for a way to fund that work, which depending on when that happens, may or may not occur for implementation in this budget year. Climate action plan, where, uh, a number of council members have had a conversation with people at Skyline College. We did have a temporary recommendation, uh, to find a contractor to do the work. We paused on that because we do want to explore the partnership with Skyline College, frankly, see what, um, uh, resources can be brought to bear at zero cost. So that is why that funding decided. Citywide performance metrics, we talked a lot about this. We do want to issue an R P this calendar year for a consultant to come in and help us with our performance metric citywide. Uh, and so we don't have a cost for that. Charter city, uh, T V E, uh, on, on the cost for that. Uh, uh, but I, I believe there is, uh, money, but it is in the, in the city clerk office for that. We, uh, I, I need to confirm that. Uh, so I'll ask finance to do that. Uh, uh, summer Saturdays and Sundays for street closures. We know the council, um, asked that this be an initiative. We do not have a cost. Uh, we do not know, uh, if we will be able to implement this this summer. Uh, so we have not projected a cost as well as with the adopt, adopted drain program and small business traction initiative that council has said staff work on. But all of those staff have not yet done the work, so we, we're not ready to project a cost. Foley Park, we have done some, some preliminary work. Council did choose a half million dollar option. Uh, funding is T V D. Uh, we have applied for, um, uh, funding through the county, uh, uh, district major K funds, uh, that, that may contribute to a part of that. And, and whereas, as well as our community bio project that we'll talk about, a nearly thirteen million dollar need that we have not identified as resources to fund the finances. Okay, proposed enhancements, uh, really quick, and then we have a break before our, our final presentation. So, uh, we're, we're actually, I think, doing pretty well. We're at the halfway mark. Enhancement summary for above the baseline, and then we'll talk about an overview of our internal service fund enhancements as well as our general fund enhancements. Um, should I pause to make sure that no one has questions on the prior section? I don't have a hand book. Okay, I don't see any hands.
There are, there are no hands that I'm seeing at this time.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep bouncing along. Okay, proposed enhancements. This section will actually be rough, uh, uh, somewhat, uh, we can go through this somewhat efficiently because, uh, we are recommending to partially restore, uh, some of the surface cuts. We will not talk about the American Rescue Act or the measure G, because we've just talked about that above. Uh, there are a total of three point, uh, two to five million dollars worth of enhancements. And so what we're going to talk about now are the internal service funds at just under three hundred thousand dollars and the general fund enhancements. And we'll talk about these quick because the departments again will go through them. But we just wanted to touch on really quickly. Total enhancements for in our internal service funds, uh, that three hundred and ninety thousand is really divided into twenty five thousand in our central garage for, uh, some, some basic improvements, uh, at the shop. Uh, uh, number of items for building and facility is at a hundred and fifty nine thousand. And then our information technology, uh, at a hundred and five thousand. So those are all listed in, in, uh, somewhat excruciating, uh, detail for some of them. Uh, for buildings, it's things like pressure washing, it's heating, generator, it's, uh, gateback urgency door replacements, some beautiful cleaning and maintenance. Honestly, these are things that if we had the resources, they would be in the baseline. These in many ways should be baseline items. They're only seen here as enhancements because we've been at a status full budget or a, a deficit based budget where we're reducing the budget. Uh, but, but many of these items are, uh, basic, uh, maintenance or heated I T investments. Uh, and, uh, it's important to note that both of uh, and, uh, it's important to note that both the facilities items and these information technology items are informed by new managers that have been hired, uh, that, uh, done an in-depth look at, uh, our facility and IT needs and made some really, uh, important key recommendations. Uh, and so we are proposing our internal service fund enhancements to, to come from two sources. Uh, one is the general fund, uh, capital improvement or one-time initiative reserve, and then the general fund equipment reserve. You remember that I said earlier when we talked about our reserves, is that we are very judicious with the spending from our reserve funds, given that it is our liquidity, our, our liquidity. Um, and so that's why the expenditures on the reserve is only three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and so there are sufficient fund balances at nine point four million for capital and one-time initiatives, and three point four in equipment reserve to, to, to address these, but it's just important to know that these are, um, a, a very small unit and a very significant, uh, need that we have. The general fund enhancements total, uh, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, this is a updated number, uh, from what you have, uh, in your, in your packet, uh, we'll go through these. The city managers, uh, I will talk about, uh, as we, actually all of these will talk about, um, when we go through the departmental presentation, so I, I will, actually won't touch on them now. But know that this column, uh, that is broken up in this, I believe, mine or so, a document that you have, uh, is ongoing costs, one-time costs, uh, the third column revenue increase or decreasing expense. Uh, for some of these, they're offsetting items that are already budgeted, and so the net cost is lower. And so that's what that third column represents, we've found savings or some offset budget, uh, to fund them. Uh, the contract officers, um, uh, is a classic example, there, there are a number of items in there, but there are contract officers, uh, that will be netted out by new revenue. So it's, it's new revenue, existing revenue, uh, or a increase in expense. There's, uh, enhancements for admin, planning, building, recreation, maintenance, uh, total one million dollars, uh, in, uh, general fund enhancements, and, and again, we'll talk about these. Uh, some are ongoing, uh, about eight hundred and fifty, are actually netted out by new revenue, uh, or, or revenue or expenditure needs. So now we're out of break before our departmental presentation, so I'll pause and ask if there are any questions, uh, and, uh, turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Hamilton, at this time, and, uh, Mr. Salazar, uh, Vice Ramadina?
Sorry, uh...
Sorry.
It's a lot of information, I, I, I think the break's appropriate at this time.
Well, so it means you have no questions at this time, and we'll go with the, the current slide.
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah.
We'll go with the current slide.
My question is that, um...
I do too.
It's, I think it's the right time for a break.
Yep, and, uh, I appreciate that there's a slide that kinda keeps us on track. So, uh, why don't we go ahead and take a recess? Uh, let's see, I've got, uh, like, say, seven fifteen, could we all please be back by before seven twenty-five? Be with cameras on, ready to go, no later than? Please, alright, uh, if you keep, keep yourselves on, um, meaning just turn off the camera and, uh, mic, thank you. The city manager, finance director, are you ready? Alright, so it is, uh, seven twenty-five. City clerk, are you ready? See, we are recording, so we'll go ahead and reconvene, uh, the San Bruno Specialist City Council meeting of June the first, and we're, uh, in a study session, and the topic is in regards to the capital improvement and operational budget, uh, being presented by staff. The manager.
Thank you, uh, and, and we'll, we'll come back. We are coming back from our break, entering in our second part of, second major part of the evening, which is a, a discussion of departmental operating budgets, and so, uh, the, the department directors and our city manager, uh, will go through high-level items with regard to their budget, uh, and in particular, talk about their enhancement requests, uh, because, uh, just about everything else, uh, with our budget, what they status will baseline. Uh, and we begin, uh, uh, with me, uh, so I can give my voice a rest, uh, talk one last time, and give my voice a rest. Okay, so, uh, overview of the city manager's office, uh, and this is, uh, we have three, uh, budget positions, uh, myself, the assistant, uh, city manager, uh, chief people officer, Jennifer Brazil, who will talk, uh, uh, next about HR, uh, and a assistant to the city manager, uh, which is a, uh, analyst level role, uh, that has also, uh, historically provided, uh, admin and clerical support, uh, for the department. We, of course, support the city council, uh, and, and help to guide and analyze policy, uh, community relations and outreach, external relations to other governmental organizations, nonprofits, and community-based groups. Uh, we, uh, provide corporate oversight, uh, and management of the organization, um, develop the budget, uh, which we're here, I presented a closed budget, uh, and we enforce as a city council, your, uh, policy development, uh, and we, uh, do that happily as a bachelor. So, uh, city manager's, uh, budget this year, uh, expenditures just under, or just over one million dollars. Uh, the general fund budget, uh, the city manager's budget is allocated out, uh, to other, uh, non-general fund funds, which is why, uh, the revenue, which is why you see departmental revenues are recovering, uh, approximately six hundred thousand, and, uh, a general fund subsidy of just under five hundred thousand. Uh, it's important to note when you see the difference between the recovery in our last fiscal year and the recovery in our current, uh, future fiscal year, there's nearly a, uh, a, a little bit over a four hundred, uh, some odd thou- uh, dollar increase, um, or three hundred some odd, three hundred and thirty thou- dollar increase. Important to note, this reflects an implementation of our new cost allocation plan, where we have gone through a, an analysis of all of the funds and that we support, and we are allocating out our overhead to other funds. And so the city manager's department is actually one department, uh, that benefits, if you will, from the new cost allocation plan, because the last cost allocation plan left funds that were appropriately allocated out to other, other funds on allocation. That is not true for other funds, and, and you know when we present the cost allocation plan, uh, some departments went up and their cost recovery somewhat down, uh, in those departments that the cost, uh, recovery, uh, amount went up. There are a number of noticeable and proposed changes, uh, I will talk about them, uh, there are, there are three really. Uh, one is a, can, a professional services budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, and in the explanation that we provided to, to the city council, one of the things that we, we noted... that we noted, we look back over the last seven years, is, it is actually uncommon for the City Manager's Office to have a budgetary appropriation for general professional services. And this is certainly related to the financial challenges of the city, and is not typical, where your corporate management office does not have a budget for professional services, which, of course, are needed. And so, what this does, it creates one either inability or inefficiency when those services are needed. And what we've seen, when we look back at prior budgets and even the last year budget, is that money has been added either during the fiscal year or at the beginning of the fiscal year, but only for specific projects, which leaves your, your City Manager's Office without the ability to contact the things that arise during the normal course and scope of management of the city. And this includes things like hiring and approval, partnering with another municipality, let's say the cost of a shared service of RFP, the need to obtain expert assistance to help analyze and create a new or emergency policy. Sometimes you may want to bring on a consultant that has expertise, and without the funds, it requires the development of a staff report and going to the City Council, which maybe is a effective process, but it's certainly not an efficient process. And so, this $150,000 that we're recommending for the coming fiscal year is actually three components. One, there's a recommendation, one, there are specific projects that are included, so $60,000 for grant assistance, and $40,000 to implement the cannabis regulations, both Council strategic initiative that are a part of the, so work program for next year, and $50,000 for general professional services. That's that. The Economic Development Manager position, this council knows very well, is a position that we have wanted to fund over the last several years, but have not been able to fund. And it was a recommendation that the City Council recently received in a report on our Community and Economic Development Department. Well, you remember, that as a part of that study, the recommendation was certainly to add the position, but it was an open question on where, do you add that position in the Community and Economic Development Department, or do you add it in your City Manager's Office? Different cities do it different ways. My initial thought, candidly, was to do it in the Community and Economic Development Department, knowing that a lot of our issues, and with getting projects through the process, occur in the Community and Economic Development Department, because we need someone, we need the solutions to be enmagedment, to help people through what is a complicated regulatory, logistical process. They may be a small business, opening for the first time, or a business that wants to expand, and they're not familiar with the process. And so, having that person within that department has been, also having the department in the City Manager's Office also has been this. One of the greatest is the position is able to solve cost departmental issues, and oftentimes, some of our issues involve the Public Works Department and the Community Services Department, in supporting the, a business through both entities, and maybe something is stuck and it needs to be unstuck, or maybe there needs to be a little bit more handholding, because the process is unfamiliar to the applicant. And so, in thinking this through with a consultant, I am recommending that it is in the City Manager's Office, whilst so it is able to solve and resolve cost departmental issues. And also, it has a, being in the City Manager's Office will allow a closer connection to the City Manager and some of our key economic development initiatives, and I think will actually improve the result in some greater success, and the future coming of this position, having the ability to work both within the organization and at a greater degree outside of the organization as a part of the economic development. The next one is adding, what sort of practice this position was always at, or position in the City Manager's Office that was actually budgeted pre-COVID-19, a position that we really did a recruitment for, and were on the precipice of hiring. And I also, on hiring that position, not knowing that COVID-19 was going to hit, but knowing that we had fiscal challenges along the way. This position is an executive assistant to the City Manager, but also provides constituent support, as well as support for the City Council, and resolving constituent issues and responding. And so, during COVID-19, we did a reallocation of an existing employee from one department to, from the Community Services Department to the City Manager's Office. So, this recommendation is to create that position as a permanent position in the City Manager's Office. It's essentially uncreasing a position that we had, that was a public information officer position, council board member, that did articulate a few budget cycles that go not to hire a PIO, but instead we utilized the same positions in the City Manager's Office. And we have already commenced to utilize our Assistant to the City Manager, which is a high-level analyst position, to accomplish a number of our PIO goals, and that, the current incumbent in that position was assigned during our EOC to be chiefly responsible for communications and our social media content. So, that role would continue with uncreasing this position and reassigning it from PIO to any technical system. And so, that concludes the City Manager's items, and if there are no questions, I will go to the next department.
Okay, so, and then, team, what I will ask is if you do have questions, as the Vice Mayor has said, if you'll raise your virtual hand, I'm not going to go around the room and ask. If I don't see a hand, we're just going. So, Vice Mayor Medina.
Two questions. Let me go back to a slide on my screen real quick. Could you, could you give the council a little bit more insight on how the revenue recovery number, and maybe we don't need to do it now, but how that, the math behind that, and the increase from 270 to 603, that's pretty significant? And to have a better understanding of how that was calculated, based on, is it time spent in the, in the manager's office? Is it just a percentage of the enterprise fund, or how does that get calculated? That's my first question. The second question is, so, this is a reassignment, so currently there is the EOC Coordinator, and then the Assistant that's temporarily there. So, you'll, the City Manager's Office will have an executive assistant, and the other position will return back to the library?
No, so, this would be restoring the City Manager's Office budgeted FTEs, let's take out the Community, the Economic Development Manager's forceback. Alone, this would restore back to four budgeted FTEs, which was the case pre-COVID. One position was just vacant and unfilled. And so, this is restoring that fourth position, but converting it into an executive assistant that will handle the executive assistant role for the City Manager's Office, which doesn't just support the City Manager, it supports the Assistant City Manager, as well as responding to constituent inquiries and any inquiries that come from the City Council, and any inquiries that come from Council to the councils in our email box. And so, that would be the role of this position, and the Executive Assistant to the City Manager will keep some of the public information duties that are assigned to that position, as well as take on additional analyst-level duties that that position was not able to do, due to handling the clerical and administrative roles of the department. And so, in many organizations, your Assistant to the is typically a principal analyst or an analyst-level position, although it is on par in your classification system with an analyst. And that position has been an Assistant to the for quite some time, but because there was not a, any clerical position, that position did not fully meet those duties. And so, there are a number of duties, including citywide website management, content management, special project management, that that position can do if we restore that fourth position that was there a few years ago with fiscal funding.
Right, that position was never filled?
Right, it was frozen for a time, it was unfrozen in a budgeted position, but not filled, I actually held off on that until COVID-19, and I was glad that I did.
Okay, so, I get it, so there'll be one more additional position there. The current assistant, I'm, I'm sorry, the role that's currently filled with, by Jennifer Deanos, that classification is separate one, correct?
There is an Assistant to the, and this would be bringing on an Executive Assistant. The Assistant-
Okay, 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 I got it, I got it, I got it. Alright, thank you.
Analyst role, and nothing about that position's compensation is changing as a result of this position.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I get it now. Second question about the revenue recovery.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
I think the best thing for us to do is to provide a, either the section of the cost allocation plan, or the actual allocation factors for the City Manager's Office, that will be pretty clear. I'll turn to the Finance Director if she has an answer to provide here, but I think that the clearest way is to just show the allocation out. The cost allocation thing was a plan that we designed to have a consultant do, there's a methodology behind, an allocation factor behind all the allocation. So, we can provide that, I don't think that's a problem.
And that's fine, thank you.
If you have to give a brief.
Okay, yeah, just to give you a general brief view, so the cost allocation study was completed by Willder, at the turn of 18, 19 calendar year. So, they really took a major shift from a previous allocation model. The previous allocation model is based on the pro rata year of the budget dollar amounts, but they're taking a lot of multiple factors for, for different departments for allocation. For, for the City Manager, for instance, they're taking a weight for the agenda items, and the City Manager spends a ton on, and they all take, put also a weight on the total number of FTEs, the City, in that, from City Manager to the entire city. And another portion is regarding the budget. So, they provide different kind of weight to different factors. So, this created a major shift in the cost allocation model. So, it's more an experience-based cost allocation model, instead of strict dollar-based cost allocation.
That's fine, thank you.
And we'll still follow up with the, with the allocation factors. Okay, so with that-
Hold on, hold on, City Manager. The, this, the other Medina has some questions. The, just looking at, on professional services, there was $69,500 that was allocated, but obviously not being brought forward in, in this budget. However, there is the $150,000, so just trying to understand that. Let me ramble a little, that's one. Two, in your professional development, I noticed there was an increase as well as in communications. For communications, I'd just maybe like to understand how that's allocated. I think it's in our department, I believe, but I'm not certain. And then, lastly, I see there's the $24,000, which was moved over to the Manager's Office a few years ago for printing, copying, and binding. Primarily, that was for focus that was issued three times a year. Is, are we looking to go back to providing that publication with the community?
So, sure, let's set through these. The $69,000 that was allocated in professional services, that was one of the examples that we talked about, where there were allocations to professional services for specific projects, and that allocation was for our stormwater initiative. And so, that funded our, our professional services, as well as some of the mailing costs for our stormwater initiative. And so, that's what happens historically, is that either there's zero budget, or there's a budget for a specific project. With regard to the $24,000 for printing, copying, and binding, which is projected to remain, there is not a plan to restore the focus. However, there is a plan to start utilizing a few pages in the recreation guide that goes out seasonally as a citywide communication. We get issued two citywide communications around COVID-19 that were, that were helpful, and we received positive feedback on, but that level of engagement, we're not going to continue, in the level of production involved in that. But we do want to add a few pages to the recreation guide, that does come at a cost, to recreation guide, so we pay for that. In addition, there are things that occurred during the year where there's not a budget for recently publications. Prime example right now, is we're having hotline issues. We have put things out on social media, people have said, well, that's great, but what if I'm not on social media? And so, we are currently developing a plan to do a meller to certain areas in the community, maybe a certain area, or maybe the entire city, that will provide mountain-wide information. And so, having this, that budget in there is both needed for sort of planned communications and unplanned communications. With regard to a $1,000 increase for, or $1,300 increase for communications, I bet that's due to some devices, but we'll, we'll find that out and provide that. And the $500 increase in professional development, I, at this moment, am not recalling what that is, but we'll provide that as well.
No problem. Thank you for your responses. And on the, on the focus, I heard your responses, and I know on the recreation activity guide, I know it gets nailed out, and my thought is also that it goes, and folks may feel, if I'm not utilizing those type of services, I'm not going to open it up. So, the focus sometimes, focus, no pun intended, on things that were happening to communicate, everybody would receive it. So, I do have, you know, I hear what your broad plan is, and maybe you're just saying the time element that it, that it took for staff to produce that for our community, maybe it's better serving some other elements. But anyway, I just want to leave that as, leave that conversation there as we continue the budget. I don't see any other hands up, City Manager, so please proceed.
Okay, next, we will go to the Human Resources Department, and there have been enhancement requests there, so I'll ask our Assistant City Manager to address that.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and members of the council. Jennifer Brazil is the City Manager, and I'll provide an overview of human resources. Human Resources has two and a half employees, a human resources manager, a management analyst, and a underfilled half-time management analyst as a administrative support. Human Resources provides recruitment, retention, quality employees through coaching, development, performance management, classification, compensation, employee training and development, employee appreciation programs, labor relations, benefits administration, compliance, through policy development, or state and federal employment laws, risk management, safety, return to work, and work with compensation. For the upcoming budget year, we are requesting $100,000 enhancement for HRAS payroll software. Right now, HR pretty much operates through spreadsheets for HRAS, and in collaboration with finance. We have a payroll system through Eden, which is at the sort of end of life. We, it's, it's quite antiquated. We are looking to work with finance on a system that will enhance the services that we're providing now, that will not- the services that we're providing now, that will not only provide applicant tracking, but performance management as well for our employees, an online training resource database, as well as payroll software. We've identified a potential vendor for the service that specifically serves a local government, we have a couple of vendors in mind, but we have identified one in particular, and the enhancement request is a hundred thousand dollars. You'll see that with the amended expenditures between last year and the proposed one for this year, it's a bit higher, you may be aware that we have six contracts that are due to expire at the end of the year, we also have some additional need for costs for labor support for upcoming negotiations as well as recruitment, support for executive level recruitment. So that's the difference in the, in the cost that you're seeing. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, colleagues, if you do, if you could raise your hand and I'll call on you now, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina, the, a simple one question is the executive recruitment, that, which position is that for?
Well, we have projected based on last year, because we had quite a number of executive recruitments, but we are currently recruiting our public works director.
Great, thank you.
In addition, we have currently filled the IT manager position, and we'll talk about that shortly as a, when they're retired and do it. We had two failed recruitments for that position, it is very difficult to hire a IT manager in this area and at our compensation level, and so we were able to find a retired and doing it that had limited hours, less than a half-time STE that they can provide because they are retired, but they are providing significant help at this moment, but we will be going out for a, another recruitment on that and will likely be employing the services of an executive recruiter to run the candidate pool.
Not seeing any other hands, on the payroll software, is this something that will allow for paperless, for paychecks, so that, so obviously right now it's twenty-six times a year that they paper, an envelope, and obviously if the machine goes down and that has to be done via hand, is that a possibility?
Yes, very important to us to have not only paperless system for employees, but also employee self-service that's also accessible on their mobile device.
That's, that's good to hear. That's overdue. And then not now, but there's a line item for specialized services of nineteen thousand, and I know it's just a continuation, I just would like to know a little bit what that is, that can be done later, save time, and professional development went down six thousand dollars, is it just not, I just want to make sure that wasn't a mistake because that's quite a reduction?
Yeah, that's, we have an employee that is not using, yeah, their education reimbursement.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other hands, we can go to the next department, please.
Okay, Jen, we sound like director, next department is the finance. So finance department has ten FTEs, which have to maximize the city's revenue, reduce costs, support, increase the inficiencies, making this whole integrity, internal control and access facilities. They also provide financial reporting and accounting for the city entirely, and then we also do a comp for operating and capital budget, and do the long-term, long-range financial forecast, and part of my stuff is in charge of utility services, and assistance items, garbage service, and then all of the rate review. My department is also, is also responsible purchasing, sustainable, receivable, red management, payroll, and treasury management. Finance department is, is looking at expenditure for next fiscal year at two point six million, just a slightly increase from the two point five million we are having this year. The increase is really massive cost by some of the services that we don't have a lot of control, whether, whether it is credit card payments associated with utility payments. They also have tighter complementment maintenance cost that's going to add to the budget, and we're, we're extremely short in staffing, even though we have ten employees in my department, but the staffing is really short to support ongoing operations, projects, and the process of profit improvement. And our biggest challenge, of course, is we have repeated several times, is ERP, ERP stands for enterprise resource planning, software, that's really the backbone of finance as far as, as why we say, this is going to be a huge project, we're going to try and get, try to start the roll work next fiscal year, and we really appreciate the company's support on that. So with that, I'm happy, do you have any questions?
Is there any questions from colleagues, if you could raise your hand? Seeing none, I believe, oh, I know we've discussed this and then we'll go right to the police, and it says the credit card fee increase is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, which I know is what, what you pay, and I know you can't do it, I think, on utilities, but has, has the city had to consider, to consider having those passed on to the public rather than, obviously those continually go up? Doesn't need an answer now, I brought this up before, just, just want to do a check-in since we're going through the budget process, and that's it for now, and we'll keep moving and move on to the police department.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Ryan Johansson, the police chief for the city of San Bruno, just to give you a brief overview of the police department's components in this budget presentation. So the police department is, currently has sixty-three full-time employees, as, as was covered in great detail when you were kind enough to allow me to present the annual report at a recent council meeting, our, our core function is to preserve community peace, this can, this includes a couple of different divisions, but fundamentally it involves patrol, traffic and parking, investigations and support services, the administration of the police department, we maintain our own records and dispatch services, we also have some contract services which will be relevant in the next couple of slides, and in the past years, we all know, also took on code enforcement. So those are sort of the core functions of the police department itself. Moving forward to the next slide, in terms of budget, thi- this year we're looking at expenditures at nineteen point five million, pretty much in keeping with what was in the amended budget from last year, looking at some slight decreases in departmental revenues and recovery, and a general fund subsidy that sits just slightly above what it was in the amended budget from last year, at seventeen point oh eight. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our high-level goals and objectives, we actually have a very exhaustive list of goals and objectives for the next fiscal year, and that's how we prioritize where we're looking for funding and what we're spending our money on, but these are sort of some of the most significant and largest ones. As you all know, we're currently undertaking the safe and equitable policing review in concert with the city manager's office and Impact Justice out of Oakland, this is a big undertaking and has also required some significant funding that the police department has put the bill for. Some other big priorities this year are employee wellness and resiliency programs, coincides with some of the strategic initiatives from, from you as our council, we have been hard at work at a more comprehensive employee wellness and resiliency program for the last couple of years, and have sort of launched it incrementally as components of it are ready, and this year our hope is to launch it in its totality, although obviously it will continue to be a work in progress, but focusing on the wellness and resiliency of our employees will be of critical importance as we're asking them to do more with less year after year, it's been an increasingly difficult landscape to be a police officer. Automated case updates and survey communications is a big part of what we're trying to do this year as well, technology to maintain and enhance the service levels at our reduced staffing, compliance with a number of different legal actions and requirements that have been placed upon us seem to be changing almost monthly at this stage for police, but the big ones are our RIPA, which is our stop data collection for racial identity profiling act, public records requests, not only the ones that come into us via requests from people who want records, but records we are increasingly being required to provide proactively through our website, which requires new technology and staff time and all sorts of other things, and so that, that's a big priority for us to keep up with all the new legislation. Recruiting for increased workforce diversity, even though we have some frozen positions, we do have positions to fill and we will have more to fill in the coming year, we'd like to focus on a more targeted marketing effort in our recruiting in order to increase the diversity of our workforce. We plan to launch the UAS unmanned aircraft system drone program, this is joint project with the San Bruno Fire Department. Radio encryption compliance is a big one that you will not see in the budget this year, but it will be a big project for us that will be coming down the pike in the coming years for budget, there are new legal requirements that we encrypt all our radio transmissions, and this requires a huge investment in infrastructure and equipment. We're doing a deep dive into pre-arrest, pre-arrest diversion programs, and we can certainly dive a little bit deeper into that at a later date, and then grants, looking for alternative funding sources for the fact that we're all operating under sort of strict and stringent budgets, including Office of Traffic Safety, the COPS grant, ABC, and some other resources. Advance the slide, please. So our core budget challenges, the one that, the one that we all know about obviously is staffing, I think it's important to set some context here in that we all know that we froze some positions last year, but sometimes it's easy to forget some of the hits that, that the police department has taken over the years in terms of its staffing, and sort of the harsh reality of this is that currently between the frozen positions from last year and positions that were frozen that actually essentially ended up being eliminated back between two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, your police department currently operates at a staffing level that is twenty-two percent lower than it was in the nineteen seventies. We've obviously had significant increases in population and significant increases in call volume and expectations of the police department over that timeframe, so staffing certainly remains our most significant challenge, especially if we want to continue to provide the exemplary level of service that the citizens of San Bruno have become accustomed to from the police department. Next slide, please. Also our increased reliance on aging technology, we've been able to get by with these reduced staffing levels over the years because we've continually invested in technology that are force multipliers for us, the problem is most of that technology is either coming of age and needs to be replaced, or there are better, best-in-class security processes that need to be put in place in order to maintain the integrity and security for this technology that we continue to deploy. And so another core budget challenge for us is how do we make sure that we're keeping these technologies up to date and functional for us, because at this point in time, many of them, we've quite frankly become completely reliant upon for day-to-day operations, and so understanding as, at the city as a whole level, that as we continue to leverage technology to be more successful and to be more efficient, we're going to need to understand that it's not a one-time investment, it's a recurring investment over time, maintain the tech you have, and to upgrade and stay on the cutting edge. Much of this technology that we have now is in fact required for us to be legally compliant with laws that have emerged since we deployed it, so technologies that were at one point optional are not optional, and we need to reinvest in them. I talked already about the expanding legal requirements, so I won't go into further detail on that here, but just know that it creates budget challenges for us because every time a new piece of legislation passes that requires something from your police department, the funds have to be allocated for us to comply with that, and there, there seem to be coming out at a rate that I've never seen before in my career, especially with many of the calls for police reform, and so there's going to need to be funding to keep up with this. And then we have critical equipment outside of technology that is beyond its usable lifespan, well beyond it, and the core one you'll see in our enhancement requests, which that, I guess it's actually not an enhancement request, it's an equipment request, is for new patrol rifles. Our patrol rifles are currently eight years beyond their usable lifespan of when they were purchased, the problem is that they have well outlived the period of time that we can sort of piecemeal together by buying new parts and keeping them functioning properly, and they're now at the point where my range masters are indicating that they cannot be properly sighted in, which makes them inaccurate, which is not good, obviously, in the event that a rifle is actually needed, and so this is in my view not an optional replacement scenario, this is something that, the cost of not replacing it, if heaven forbid there's an unfortunate accident, would be far in excess of the cost of replacing them and is simply something we have to do. Ballistic vests, we actually obtained a grant that pays for fifty percent of our ballistic vests, but in the next year we'll be coming up on needing to replace every single one of them for the entire police department, I would put this in the same category as patrol rifles, right, one ballistic vest that is expired, outdated, and an injured or killed officer is going to result in far greater cost than the cost of replacing those vests. And finally, vehicles, I know vehicles are a really tough one for the city, they're expensive, and we are the toughest of any city department on vehicles, they don't last very long with the police department, we drive them very hard, and they, they just don't have a very long life, but the fact is that the way we drive patrol vehicles means that once they get beyond eighty thousand miles, they are a danger to us and the public to continue using them the way we do, and we currently have seven vehicles that sit beyond that eighty thousand mile mark as we speak here today, so we're not requesting replacement of all of those vehicles, but enough to at least keep us whole and sort of put some of them on the shelf until we are able to replace them all. So just know that there are a number of other equipment needs that would fall into this category, as with every other city department, I'm trying only to bring to you the ones that I think you need to know are absolutely critical and essential. Is there, can you advance the slide? I think there may be.
It's, it's important for council to know, because we did build in the equipment replacement reserve, that these are built into the baseline budget, so the rifles are ballistic and the vehicles, of course, when vehicles are built into the, the baseline budget, so they're not shown on that enhancement list, because they're muted expenses.
Advance the slide, he said?
Mr. Mayor?
Ho- ho- hold on, Vice Mayor, let's, let, let the chief finish his presentation. Continue, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that this is it, so that, the requested budget enhancements are to add two full-time sworn police officer positions to our existing authorized strength, these are actually fully funded through a cost recovery agreement we were able to secure with YouTube, this actually ends up being, I think, a very beneficial agreement for the city because YouTube has essentially agreed to pay the full cost of employment for two full-time police officers to create a fifth or a fourth beat in our service areas that is not isolated only to their campus, so recognizing the impact that their campus has on public safety in the community, we are able to secure two additional fully funded positions that are force multipliers for us to respond to emergency calls all over the city, to help backfill overtime issues and to help keep us whole. Additionally, to restore two of the frozen slash eliminated sworn police officer positions, I know that our city manager has already covered the, the funding plan for this to slowly absorb it into the general fund over some period of time, these positions are critically important for us to maintain service levels at this point, and then there's a couple of, of really relatively small investments in the technology type of things I already spoke about, one is, is IRIM software, this is essential in order to comply with the racial identity profiling act, the stop data requirements that go into effect beginning January of two thousand twenty-two, we actually launched our stop RIPA data on June first as, as a test pilot program for six months, but this has a, a cost in that we need this IRIM software in order to integrate with our current CAT RMS system in order to input the data that is required to be collected by the state. And then there are two additional software programs, Vigilant and Entrado, Entrado actually is, it's requested as a budget enhancement, but it's, it's funded on the backend through a reimbursement through the state, and Vigilant is a software program that manages our vast amount of, of digital evidence, video evidence that comes in nowadays in order for it to be more searchable and accessible in our system. I thought that may be the last slide now, Mr. City Manager, can you advance this to confirm? We talked about patrol rifles and the vehicles, this is duplicate.
Next slide?
That's it, ready?
Okay, so, so first of all, chief, I appreciate you being here through the studies session with us, I want to open it to my colleagues and then I'll circle back, but I just wanted to say something, I, I appreciate you being very candid as you are, when you, when you talk about the rifles and you talk about the vests, these are critical things that must be maintained and, and be replaced in a timely fashion, and I appreciate that the department and city staff in general basically make sure they can get by and they do their job and, and they, and they do it well, but things like this, and I understand, city managers, it's a
But things like this, and I understand, City Manager, it's, you know, we all work on it, but I really, I really want to express for myself that if there are elements like this, these are crucial items to protect the officers, the community, our residents. And so I would always ask that these things be brought forward, but I appreciate your candor with that, so we understand that and the need for it. Let me open it up to first Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I wanted to echo your comments, Mayor Medina. Our police are doing an outstanding job and seeing the first slide of the reminder of how they're able to achieve that with less police officers. So thank you and to all of our police force. Police Chief Johansson. My question, I'm looking at page 119 of the budget, and I was curious where in the line items are those vehicles and the vests and the rifles? Is there, is it somewhere that I'm not seeing?
Yes, City Manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as you were trying to clean up and describe for me before, these are actually purchases to be made out of equipment reserve funds and are not necessarily enhancements. But I think that there was some desire on the part of the City Manager for me to bring these things up to you all so that you would know why they're being requested in an equipment reserve that really is under some pretty tight constraints.
Yeah, so we typically go over our equipment reserve funds as a precursor to our CIP conversation, and so you will see those expenditures on June, Wednesday, June 9th, right before our CIP. But they are not within the departmental budget. They are within the projected expenditures for those funds.
So that would be in the equipment purchase, page 417? Yeah, it's there. Okay, I see it. All right. All right, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So I want to agree with all the positive comments from my colleagues regarding the police department. As someone who works in an organization who's been, who's asked year after year to do more with less, I've come to, I'm almost come to view that phrase as a failure of leadership after a while. So I absolutely commiserate with you and, you know, hopefully we can more quickly address that as we move forward. The only question that I have, and I believe I know the answer, I just want to, I just want to hear it because it's something that is important for us, is in code enforcement, you've got two positions listed. My understanding is we still only have one staffed. That is still going to, we're still intending to staff that second position for code enforcement.
Actually, both positions are now staffed.
Oh, great.
At this moment. See how quick he is, Councilmember?
Sorry?
I said, see how quick the chief is?
Yeah.
Boom, done. I wish I could say it was quick, but yes, they are currently both staffed.
Great, thank you.
No, like I said, Chief, I appreciate you taking time to be here, because I know, you know, you're picking away from other things, so I appreciate that. But I think you've heard from my colleagues to pass on our thanks and appreciation, and it is a good perspective to look back that this department, whether it's getting a grant for the officer that is doing traffic, or whether it's with YouTube, or whether it's with Artichoke Joe's, or whether it's other ways in which we're also funding police, you made it work. Your department stepped up at this last time to say, you know, we can, we can get by and we'll try, but I also don't want us to get to a situation where it's like the rubber band and you keep pulling it. Well, you only can pull it so long before, you know, unfortunately, it has some repercussion. So want to thank your team for doing what they do and appreciate their service to the community and to all of us. So thank you and enjoy the rest of your week.
I will definitely. Very much appreciated. I just want to make sure to be clear because sometimes I know that in my effort to be candid, I come across kind of strong. These requests, while dire needs, are not dire needs because they've been neglected by council or by our city manager. This is the first time I'm bringing these to anyone's attention, and from the moment I've done so, we've received nothing but support in getting them resolved. It's just that each year we kind of pick and choose what we bring before you because we know that you have very difficult decisions to make and to face. And our city manager has been very eager to understand the challenges the police department faces, and these are not easy things as Police Chief to bring to City Manager in a timeline like this. And I'm very grateful that he's advocated for putting these into what is going to be some very difficult budget decisions, and I'm thankful that you all are considering it. So thank you.
And thank you for your closing comments and clarification. I think you did fine, but always appreciate that opportunity to understand best. So thank you. And we will move on to the fire department, I think. Yes?
I don't know who's taking control of the screen. All right, we're going to stop screens here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a three-minute break?
Increased in scope and complexity and importance. The new position is approved would allocate approximately 50% of its time to overgrown vegetation, wildland urban interface issues throughout the city, and aid in the citywide vegetation management programs. The remainder of the 50% of this position's time would be allocated to the performance of fire and life safety inspections. With the additional inspections being performed, that would increase revenue to the department. So there's, I think there's a direct correlation with the offset from the revenue that this position and the increased capacity in our fire inspection program would bring and offset the cost of the position itself at approximately $100,000 is estimated. The 2020 fire season has made it clear that we need to do a better job managing our urban and wooded spaces here throughout the city of San Bruno, and this new position again would spend half the year working on that overgrown vegetation and those wildland urban interface issues and a citywide vegetation management program that would be, we would work towards with our capital improvement program. Since this is historically a busy job during the summer months, to conduct any of these fire inspections, inspector would carry out other business inspections during the off months. So the summertime, they would focus on this wildfire threat to our community and inspecting properties and helping manage our wildfire program. And the remainder of the year would be increasing our capacity to do inspections on commercial and business properties throughout the city of San Bruno. We have approximately 2,000 licensed businesses in San Bruno, and the current fire inspection staff can only inspect about a quarter of the licensed business. This additional position will help bridge that gap between our current inspection program and help make our community safer. So that's our two important aspects of our enhancement requests, and that would bring us to a total of 37 FTEs within the fire department. And again, this is, you know, we run a really lean operation here at the fire department, and these positions are critical to address some of those wildfire threats throughout the community and restore two important firefighter positions. And with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions we have.
Any hands from colleagues? Seeing none at this time. The only thing is on the wildland urban, the program and the personnel, obviously for those, that's a critical project that we've started and we want to, I believe the goal is to continue to maintain it and as well as inspections. I know that that's critical, and we find things within the community when going out for that on a regular basis. And also, that's also a potential, not revenue base, but also offsetting costs as well. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for highlighting that issue. The offset for the position itself is an important aspect of it. So if we do bring in that anticipated $100,000, the position's approximately $150,000 or so for that fire inspector position, so it'll help offset those costs. So there's a direct correlation between the revenue and the expenditure side for personnel.
Thank you. All right, seeing no hands at this time. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation, and then we will move on to our next department, which I believe is Public Works.
Yes, good evening. I'm Shimon Ritchie. It's an honor to represent the Public Works Department as your interim director tonight. Current staffing levels are 6.35 full-time employees. This division provides multi-level services of three primary buckets, include traffic, capital improvement programs, and land development, which includes encroaching permits, review of building permits, if they impact, right away, and private development. We also assist with high-level strategic management of plans such as safe routes to schools, local road safety and master planning, as well as implementing these planned projects. Notable accomplishments include the design and completion of studies of six projects, including the Scott Street Grade Separation Project Study Report, the San Bruno and Cherry Avenue Intersectings modifications, which will be awarded shortly, and the spyglass drive storm drain improvement design. I also would like to note that we obtained grants for several efforts, just as pre-mentioned, the Safe Route School Plan, Local Road Safety Plan, MTC Quick Strike, as well as CALOES Grant for the spyglass storm drain improvements. We also applied for the ATP Cycle 5 for Huntington Cycle Truck, although we were not successful because, you know, learning experience and the cycle ATP grants are quite a significant investment, though our staff, two staff for a period of two to three months. And so these are not insignificant, but I believe it is still an accomplishment because we can use what we've taken to apply for additional grants. We did complete five construction projects, including the street floor seals to our main replacements of facilities, and as well as street rehabilitation on a portion of San Antonio Avenue. Some of the challenges that we have seen are related to some loss of staff. So in April of 2020, we lost our traffic engineer, as well as in February of 2021 of this year, we lost an civil associate engineer. We have been in essence working with two CIP staff and one private development staff. There are approximately 60 projects. We are recruiting, and so we are hopeful, and we will need to supplement with some consultant services in order to make up for that loss. So the current budget enhancement requests include the restoration of the one traffic engineering position, which is a civil associate engineer position, which was frozen as a result of last year's COVID pandemic response and budget balancing. And the addition of one principal civil engineer, this enhancement would be funded through private development reimbursement proceeds. We would also like to augment our traffic engineer position with $80,000. We would also like to augment our traffic engineer position with $80,000 because there is a difference in, you know, what it costs to bring on staff, full-time staff versus consultant help. They are more expensive and to provide for the entire year, we do need to supplement not only the restoration of the vacant position, but also additional funding. And we also request approximately $20,000 for temporary help. This is to help ship certain engineering administrative type work onto temporary help that can, you know, do more routine and basic work that frees up our engineers to do more complex work. And that concludes the Public Works Administration Engineering budget. And I'm over for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Any, not seeing any hands from council members at this time, so please proceed.
Yes, the next division is the Streets Division. The baseline FTEs currently is 4.7. They provide a variety of different services. Notable accomplishments include managing the sign replacement project. So they manage the sign replacement program to replace and upgrade and bring traffic signs to compliance with federal, state regulatory standards, including 236 regulatory signs, 61 warning signs, and 59 other signs. They replaced 14 streetlight poles due to auto accidents, as well as replacing 22 other streetlight poles along San Bruno Avenue, on San Bruno Avenue along San Mateo Avenue. In coordination with a contractor, they also maintain 17 traffic control devices and rapid Next slide. So enhancements for this budget cycle include the restoration of one maintenance worker. What they would be able to provide as a result would be a restoration of approximately four hours for the San Mateo Avenue downtown area, which was reduced to, with that position being limited the last budget cycle, a restoration of four hours for excel orders and trash issues throughout the city, which was reduced to two hours, the ability to respond more quickly and to complete street sign repairs, street light, side pole repairs, barriers, graffiti response, pulp holes, traffic work orders, red curb painting, various other work orders, USA marking. This would also allow Storm Division employees to work on the trash catcher program, cleaning and maintaining them, and responding to calls for Storm Division. And that concludes the Streets Division portion.
Any questions from colleagues on Streets? Not seeing any hands up at this time.
So next we'll have Pamela Wu, our Director of Community and Economic Development, and I believe she is joining now.
Thank you, City Mayor.
But she's just been called to the room. Pamela, you ready?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Pamela Wu, your Community and Economic Development Department Director. Next, please. Tonight I have the pleasure to share with you the proposed budget for the Community and Economic Development Department. First of all, I would like to identify and also showcase some of the priority projects that the department will be undertaking, which directly aligns with the strategic initiatives that City Council has outlined for our department. Mainly, this includes preparing the housing elements for the next cycle, development and also implement the Affordable Housing Fund, and also try to engage affordable developers to facilitate construction projects for the city. Staff anticipates to complete and facilitate the completion of the Bay Hill specific plan, and also to engage on the YouTube Phase One entitlement review. Also be working on other current projects, such as the exciting Hyundai Genesis Auto dealership at the crossing site to complete the Amazon warehouse fulfill center that was previously occupied by the Skype Park Building. We have actively engaged on the school reuse site, which includes Crestmore High School and the former Anvout School. We'll also be focusing on implementing an economic development program with the Chamber of Commerce to assist the small business for the city. Lastly, we'll be engaging conversation with various stakeholders to implement city's Climate Action Plan, and also to start the visioning process for the Temfera redevelopment project. Next slide, please. The department has two divisions, and we'll start with the Planning Division. So the Planning Division has five and a half full-time employees, which comprises of a planning and housing manager, a senior planner, an associate planner, assistant planner, half a director, half an assistant to this director, and half of a management analyst. The Planning Division focuses on specific plan, current projects, sequel compliances, zoning code update, which the council has recently seen, processing applications such as building permit, planning, conditional use permit, implementing Climate Action Plan, looking at land use policy, and working on housing elements. Part of the department's proposed budget enhancement includes implementing one additional full-time senior planner to focus on city's long-range planning. Right now, the city's long-range planning efforts, such as Housing Element, Climate Action Plan, and other related issues have not been put on a department's priority. And please know that since the time of this budget preparation, the department has come to realize that there is a high potential of asking for another budget enhancement for another senior planner to assist with the current workload that's coming to the city with the various development proposals. Council will be seeing another budget enhancement at the final budget proposal if this need comes to arise. In addition to possibly two full-time senior planners, Planning Division is also requesting a permanent internship to support the Planning Division work, and also an on-call clerical support. In addition, council, remember that council has previously appropriated $70,000 to retain a consultant to implement the city's Affordable Housing Plan. We have yet to make that happen, so the department is requesting a budget enhancement to continue that plan. The one before? Can I have two slides before? There you go. Thank you. Can I have the planning budget slide? There you go. Thank you. So this slide presents the proposed department revenue in addition to expenditure. You'll see a slight increase from the overall planning department revenue largely attributed to the master fee schedule update. So for a lot of fees that currently are charging an X amount of dollars, the fees are anticipated to go up, which has a big factor in the overall department revenue increase. And also, the expenditure is expected to have a slight decrease, and mainly due to some of the fee that will be recuperated from the master fee schedule update. And also, there is a slight increase from the overall professional development and some of the professional fees, studies that will be also funded by the developers as opposed to general fund. So overall, historically, the planning fees has not been captured from the, the real cost because these have not been able to recuperate the full cost. Hopefully, with the next fiscal year, there will be a substantial increase on planning fee, and which is to offset the expected expenditure. Next slide. So now we'll move on to the Building Department. So the Building Division has 6.5 full-time employees, which includes one chief building official, two building inspectors, and two counter technicians, in addition to the administration functions, such as myself, executive assistants, and also the management analyst. Building Division staff focuses on processing and taking building permits, reviewing, routing, plan check, inspection, and also the planning, the Building Department will also be focusing on FEMA floodplain management to implement the new ordinance, and also the most exciting of all, to deploy a full digital submitter and plan check review process for the city. The Building Division Building Enhancement Request includes one additional on-call contract inspector, mainly is to offset the large value of construction that's anticipated to come to the city. Right now, the city has two building inspectors. This is just barely not enough to keep up with the amount of construction that's going to happen in the next year or so. And the Building Division will also share with Planning Division an on-call clerical support to offset some of the administrative tasks that's being asked by the department staff. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the building budget forecast for next year. Council will see a large increase in the overall department revenue, again, largely contributes to the master fee schedule update to realign the building, plan checking, and also inspection fee, and also the sheer amount of construction activities that has been happening and also forecasting in the pipeline. The expenditures is expected to decrease slightly. Again, it has to do with some of the professional services that will be funded by the developer, and also a slight decrease in the professional development due to the vacancy from the chief building official right now. So the Building Division accomplishment over the years, including our attempt to have a full digital submitter and also plan checking process that could be done via e-track it. And also, the building staff has completed a user fee schedule to reevaluate the building permit and inspection fee. Building Division focused on adoption of the 2019 California Building Standard Codes. And if you, council member, building staff has also brought a study session forward to you in the past regarding the REACH Code. We've also done a lot of inspection for the single-family and the multifamily residential development skyline, and we continue to collect the relevant fees, such as the city's development impact fee, affordable housing fees, city art fee upon issues of building permit. Lastly, city building staff continues to conduct co-compliant related activities since the departure of the code enforcement program. Some of the things that, just because code enforcement has been allocated to the police department, some of the work still remain with this department. That's all I have, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation, and also Shewon Ritchie for hers. Not seeing any hands up at this time. Oh, Vicar Medina.
Yes. Yes, thank you for that, for that part of the presentation. So understandably, we've had some revenue issues in the past where we have projected a certain amount of projects to get completed, specifically the problem that we had with YouTube and how comfortable are we with this $4 million figure? It's, it's pretty substantial.
It's definitely a projection. It's a forecast. We are fairly comfortable seeing the current schedule. So I believe most of the council members have seen the construction progress of 1450 Bay Hill. We will soon be bringing the Bay Hill specific plan and hopefully the entitlement for Phase One to also for adoption and approval in the next month or so. Should that be true, you'll be seeing the building plan and also the construction documents coming too for the first, for the first phase. So the fee is based upon the square footage of that phase and the set-up sort of phases in addition to other projects that have been added in the pipeline. So to name a few, the Amazon project, the Glenview Terrace project, the 160 Hotel that just was recently approved. So this is definitely an estimate, it's not concrete numbers, but hopefully we have a pretty good feeling about this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, for a while, we were told on a number of occasions that the department needed analysts. I believe it was one, and then at some point it was two. And so I'm just trying to figure out, we went from that to, it sounds like two full-time senior planners to a fellow and then one on-call support. What happened to the analyst need?
Great question, Councilmember Mason. You had, council had generously offered the management analysts to the department, I want to say probably last fall, through one of the budget enhancement for Q3 review. So that's why I say these half of the positions, the department has already received a full-time management analyst position.
Okay. I think it would help, as I was looking at, I was listening to the police and the fire, but it would be helpful to understand, it would be helpful to understand what positions have been added in the last year, and then what positions are being requested in the next year, and this is for all the departments, please.
We can provide that information, and the management analyst will approve that mid-year budget for the current year by the City Council as a new act.
Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands up.
Good evening, Mayor Medina, and members of the council, and Latola, Community Services Director. And this evening, I'm pleased to be presenting the budget for the four divisions that make up the Community Services Department, Recreation Park, Senior Services, and Library. So I'm going to start off with a recreation overview. So the recreation team has 3.95 full-time equivalents, and that consists of two coordinators, half of a recreation superintendent, and then there's percentages of the administrative staff, which comprises me, the executive assistant, and another, another administrative physician. The Recreation and Administration Division, we coordinate our city's forensic exchange program with Narita Japan, conduct the planning and community engagement for delivery of new parks, and as you all know, we are the product lead for the new Recreation Aquatics Center, as well as other facility improvement projects. Recreation's diverse and robust range of programs and activities for the community, including enrichment classes on a variety of topics for a variety of age ranges, aquatics programs, which will be taking a little bit of a hiatus, and I'll talk about that a bit when we talk about the budget. And we also offer youth programs such as seasonal camps and specialty camps, youth sports, both those that we run, the city runs sports leagues, and also provided by facilitating field use, used by a variety of sports organizations in the community. We have special events delivered throughout the year. The Division also supports the initiatives and programs of the Parks and Recreation Commission. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the Division reimagined many of the community events and programs offered throughout the year. Some of these will continue in the upcoming fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the proposed budget reflects changes due primarily to the closure of the existing Veterans Memorial Rec and Aquatics Center. In looking at the expenditures, the full range of aquatics programs, they, as I mentioned, they're going to take a little bit of a hiatus. We may be offering some off-site programs if we can find a pool to use, that's been a little bit difficult. We're not able to use cappuccino because of their construction. And so what we're doing now is looking at some of our neighboring cities so we can at least redirect our different swim users to programs, and we're trying to develop some reciprocity agreements with some of our neighboring cities. Many of the facility-based programs that were held at the existing rec center will be relocated to sites like San Bruno Park Schools and the San Bruno Senior Center. Community events are also included in this budget, and it includes things that everybody's familiar with, like the annual Baycon, Community Day in the Park, Compton in the Park, the holiday tree lighting. But we're also going to keep both the Jinx Story Ride and Jingle Around the Block. Those are really popular during COVID, and we heard a lot of people want to see those return. And also the monthly thing, Rec in the Box. And also the monthly thing, Rec in the Box, that's implemented during COVID will also continue. Revenues reflect a partial restoration of programs and rentals. Of course, we are demolishing the rec center, so that's impacting not only facility rentals, but certain picnic site rentals. On the lots of the gym is a, was a really big revenue source for us that will be deferred until we build a new rec. And of course, we no longer have the full complement of aquatic revenue. I'd like to talk a little bit about the enhancement requests that are here. So as Giovanni explained a little bit earlier, there was a deputy community services director. The real impact to the budget is $92,000 since there's, there is an administrative position that will be unfilled within our budget. And so what we're proposing to do is add this new position rather than reclassifying one of the frozen positions that we have within our department currently in recreation. There is a frozen coordinator, supervisor position. So the reason we're looking to do this now, this was, this was very much recommended in the business plan for the Rec and Aquatic Complex. The plan identified the need to bring in expertise early into the planning of the implementation plan for the facility. We're going to start groundbreaking really soon. It's a two-year process and before you know it, we're opening the doors. But the planning for the programs and the financial model for that facility, it actually begins now. So this position will be focused on revenue generating programs, partnerships and community engagement in these expanded areas of programming such as concert level rentals and a fitness center type programming options that we'll also be offering to the community. So essentially, the position will be responsible for increasing the capacity to drive, really drive revenues at the rec. The second enhancement in recreation are holiday decorations. We want to kind of refresh this at the downtown and also find a really wonderful tree for Centennial Plaza to look at, look as the new location for our tree lighting in the coming year. I think, have the next slide, or the next one? Great. Okay, so the second division I'd like to talk about is parks. So parks maintenance, the team in parks maintenance, they take care of 97 acres of city parks, recreational facilities, and some school sites. They are responsible for care and cultivation of nine baseball and softball fields, six-ish soccer fields, two football fields, and the dog park at Comodore Park. The division means approximately 7.3 miles of streets and medians, over 7,000 trees, 7,250 trees. And we also support various beautification events. We recently did a real lovely planting in front of City Hall with a local Daisy tree. The division is also responsible for 128 acres of open space and works in collaboration with the fire department for fire mitigation. Have the next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget and the only noticeable change in the chart that's there, I wanted to point out, is the decreasing revenue. So we're working on renegotiating our joint use agreement with San Bruno Park School District. And one of the things that was in the, the current agreement is that we have an equal exchange of the same amount of fees. And so, so that reflects a doing away with that. And so the revenue is not in this budget and it was paid out of the recreation budget. So it is offset within the department budget. As far as the enhancement request, we're, we're requesting a number of items to restore back some of the service level that was lost with the freezing of three park maintenance workers that retired last August. Those three, those three employees, they were very tenured and they had areas of expertise and focused on mowing, weekend work, and throwing the medians for weed control. So when those positions became vacant, it was summer, early fall, and we were at the height of the pandemic with areas of parks being closed, which actually allowed for a pretty smooth transition of staffing with reduced level that we had. As we moved through winter and spring, the previously closed years of the parks reopened, which created increased usage and increase of maintenance. Baseball was about to start, playgrounds reopened. So park staff was returning to a normal kind of use of the parks, but yet we were down a significant number of our park maintenance staff. So what they've been trying to do with the reduced level is to really focus on the day-to-day use of the park. Because as, as we all kind of saw in absurd, the park use really kind of drove after during COVID, it was the one thing that people were encouraged to do, to go outside. And so when you look at the maintenance within the park and a lot of it is tied to, you know, cleanliness, safety, that's something that is, is a primary responsibility. It's something that our staff was diligent about, really proud of the work that they were able to do. But what we're finding is that we weren't able to be as proactive as we wanted to be with our issues that were coming up, particularly as we started to do field prep and we were finding different breakages in irrigation or different amenities as they were getting more use, there would be broken amenities. Our response time to get things repaired has really slowed down. So by restoring the, one of the frozen park maintenance workers, that will actually allow us to be more efficient with the work that we do with our day-to-day maintenance and have a greater, a much better response time and being able to take some of those projects that come up. Another, one of our enhancement requests is overtime, is an increase in overtime to support work beyond the everyday scope of the division. And so what's happening is there are a lot of different projects that are coming up. Where park maintenance can help with the overall cost of a project. For instance, with the Centennial Plaza work, we believe that there's different demo work that we could do in, in kind of help control the overall cost of the project, but that could be beyond the everyday scope of what they do. So we've, we've put in some money so we can redirect the work of our staff to take on some of those tasks related to projects. The part-time park maintenance assistant actually restores the part-time budget in this division to pre-COVID levels to allow for seasonal assistance that we really need on weekends, particularly as picnic rentals pick up. There's funding in there to reclassify one of our maintenance work, apartment maintenance worker twos to apartment maintenance technician two. So currently, our tree team consists of apartment maintenance technician two and apartment maintenance worker. And we did a classification study because they actually do very similar, same type work. And what we found was that we actually have someone that needs, that should be reclassified. So that is in there to, to request making that correction. We also have a part-time administrative assistant. And so the part-time administrative assistant, what we have at their supporting parks, there's kind of a, we have a really big administrative load with our tree program there, but it really will also help support the whole department and make up for currently even sharing our admin staff with the city and our new offices. And finally, at the bottom of the list there, you'll see the enhancement request for on-call landscape architectural services. We recently discussed that the downtown streetscape greening and landscaping study session, that these projects that are coming up in the downtown, that they're highly technical, and we will require the assistance of resources that the city doesn't currently have in-house. So the resource will allow us to take improvement projects and schematic plans so we can actually start implementing renovations to the downtown area. Moving on to the next division. Okay, senior services. Okay, our senior services, they provide opportunities for adults 50 years of age and older, encourage them to engage in active and healthy programs. This team delivers a broader range of programs at the San Bruno Senior Center, typically during a non-COVID year that would be congregant lunch, weekday through our transportation service for San Bruno residents. The division also works in collaboration with the San Bruno Senior Citizen Advisory Board to plan and implement special event activities and services. Many of the classes and programs supported by revenue from non-general fund sources, including revenue generated by program, program activities at the center and grants, including a nutrition and transportation grant provided by the nonprofit Nutrition Site Council. I just want to take a minute to really highlight the manner in which this particular team programs during COVID. They reprogrammed the Congregate Meal Program to provide delivered and grab and go meals to an average of 130 seniors per day. They also provided virtual programs, things like Zumba and Spanish classes. They had in-person socially-distanced line dancing in the parking lot almost from the start of COVID. And they also did online holidays and celebrations for Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day. And these programs were so important to provide continued socialization that's so vital to this community and became particularly critical for our senior population during COVID. Next slide, please. Okay, so, so what this slide represents is reopening the senior center and restoration of programs and service, service levels to pre-COVID, COVID levels. It includes a return to congregant dining. It does discontinue the pickup and delivery programs that were partially funded through the COVID grant. And the revenue is also reflecting a restoration of programs and our rentals. The last division is the library. So our library provides San Bruno residents and visitors the community lifelong, okay, the next slide, please. Our library provides San Bruno residents and visitors with community lifelong learning and literacy materials and resources to help them achieve personal growth and goals. Such as, they provide instruction, support, access to internet computers, in-house wifi, wifi hotspots. The division also offers educational and personal enrichment services, including storytime, a homework center, and a summer reading program. They also offered special programs in advance throughout the year. With the support of the Culture and Arts Commission, the division also runs ebook, they present movies in the parks, Shakespeare in the park, art in the library, and Community Day in the Park art project. During COVID, the library completely revamped its service delivery model in order to continue to serve the community. The division hosted 89 livestream storytimes attended by 1,385 households. Curbside service resulted in over 73,000 items being circulated. And multiple, multiple programs were offered virtually through grant funding such as NASA at the library, San Bruno Park School District preschool virtual storytimes. Next, please. Okay. So the expenditures for, so, so the, the main things to call out, I'm going to go with the reverse order of what the notes are. The revenue was decreased, if you recall, in the masterpiece study, we recommended the elimination of the, there was one more overdue, overdue material fee. And so we recommended that was eliminated. So that is the reduction of revenues. The expenditures, they're a little bit lower than last year. And some of that has to do with the part-time funding. And so if you look at the enhancement request, right now, the way the, the library is operating and it's open, they have a base hour, base number of hours you're open to the public at 24 hours per week. So what we're requesting is the funding of $92,700 to increase that by 14 hours per week, so we can be open 38 hours per week. And so while it's not restoring to 100% pre-COVID levels, it is kind of incrementally getting us back so we can be open more hours. The schedule that was selected, it was looked, we looked at the pattern, we have the ability to count how many people are coming in during certain hours within the day. And so the staff gave a good recommendation where they really could capture times of the library when it was, he said it's maximum. And that concludes the presentation on my department. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And if there are questions for any one of the divisions in the department, now would be the time to raise your hand. Just really quick on the library, I know it was the elimination of the overdue fines. However, in another goal, it's to obtain at least $20,000 in grant funding to bolster the revenue that was eliminated due to the overdue fines. So, so I, I know it's a nice gesture and then, but we're now, we're spending staff time on trying to get some grants, I would imagine, to try to, to get.
Trusting, I really should have made this a talk line. The library really has very resourceful in seeking, seeking grant money. That's how they did the whole NASA at the library program. There's a lot of, there's a lot of funding out there to do things in partnerships with libraries because the services are free to the community. And so it was a way for them to, it was really weighted your attention to work what they actually are doing already. They think it's gone unnoticed.
And then at, for the senior center, I know this has been ongoing, I got an email not too long ago as far as replacements of the trash enclosure and repave and restrive the parking lots. Is there any timeline we have on that?
I do not have a timeline right now. It's, I think it's kind of strung in between the staffing issues with Public Works, but I would have to defer to Public Works on that.
Okay. Can get that answered another time. I know that the vice mayor has his hand up, so I'll turn it to him for right now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question, slide 121. What does PT stand for in funding, PT?
Part-time.
Part-time funding, okay, thank you. And, and the homework center would operate on which hours? Just curious.
I think it's three to six.
Three to six PM? And that, that would be going from, is that also on the weekends or?
No, it includes what the regular hours were. I have to see if I have my notes on that.
Right, if there are three hours a day and it's going to 38.
Yeah, it was, yeah. But it's a concurrent, it's a different type of staffing for the homework center. So it was a concurrent. It is included in that.
So why don't we take that as one of our follow-up questions, then we'll provide that to the city council on follow-up.
Sure. Comment question is, it's amazing what gets done with 2.9 people at the senior center. And the reliance on volunteers. How, how, how does that work in compared to having volunteers to maybe help out at parks? That if we were to get, to see if people were interested in volunteering to, to help clean up the park a little bit. Currently, the community has responded by cleaning up streets in downtown and neighborhoods. And, and if, if there was a way to, to see how the volunteers could also work at the park, I'd be happy to volunteer at the Florida Park. I live down the street from it, and if there was something that needed to be done, I'd be happy to do it. I'm sure I have neighbors that feel the same. So that if we can do that and have volunteers work at the senior center, then, then why can't we have volunteers assisting in other park operations?
Maybe we need a new push of our adopt a park program. We do have one.
That, that is one, one thing, sure.
So to the director, I know maybe she, but there is an adopt a park program, I think is what she's alluding to is maybe the staffing component.
Right.
I'm not sure where it's at or how many have adopted, but the program exists. I believe there's even public, publication or something that folks can get to read on it and get more data. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the question in the, in the, sorry, I'm going to the slide here real quick. For the deputy community services director. Help me, help convince me because we're looking at an opening date a couple of years from now. And so when would this enhancement occur? And I'm just concerned of what somebody at that rate will be doing for a year and a half.
Well, so I would first think that it's going to take us a while to do the recruitment. So I would, I would think we're looking at probably a four to six month savings of, of that number there.
Which is, but the savings, the savings are budgeted already?
Okay. I'll beat me to that, okay. So I kind of want to tell, it's a little bit of a storytelling, so bear with me. So we went through this whole conceptual design and then how to build it. We really haven't gotten into the how to program it. And when you really want to make this a very financially successful type of a facility-based program model, we need to make sure that it has the right balance of uses. And we're venturing into a few different business models that happened within the, the world of recreation, but really hasn't happened in San Bruno recreation. So what we need to do is to make sure we bring in the expertise to really guide forward these programs, which are going to probably be the predominant revenue centers for this facility. So for instance, the way we would rent these facilities is a little bit different. We're already trying to do some outreach. We're already trying to do some outreach with our hotel industry that's very interested in perhaps doing some type of, sorry, glasses of steam, that are perhaps interested in, in doing some type of, using it as a conference center. It takes a little bit different, a concierge level, type of a, a service level, and we have to set this up, their systems, their processes. There's a lot of heavy lifting that we have to do to prepare, prepare the facility so we can open it. So the first time somebody called and wanted to rent it, we had everything set up. So if it takes us about six months to get somebody on board, it's realistic it's going to take them about a year, maybe a little bit longer to try to help tilt up these different processes. And then in the plan, hopefully you will see the revenue model so we can add a few more staff that are going to help execute those programs. There are all these different layers of building now the team that's to, to really fully realize the team because it's, it's a combination of existing staff and new staff, existing talent and new talent that are really going to drive the success of this facility. But we have a missing piece to help guide really the new and the full vision of the center.
Still not a hundred percent convinced, but I think we probably should have some more discussion about it. We have a business plan that we haven't had a, a public discussion about yet. So there's a lot of questions of, of what are we going to charge for residents to, to be at that? So I'm just hesitant to take on, on that role, knowing that, how there are construction delays, how, how this project has been delayed, and, and how quickly schedules can change. And, and the timing of, of this, of this center. So I guess we can have further, further discussions later.
Any other further questions, Vice Mayor?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. Just a couple of, I guess, follow-up questions. I think the library staff does an amazing job with the little resources that they have been provided over the years. You did mention the grants. I did want to ask, and that kind of triggered a question for the city, actually for the city manager, is I haven't heard yet any mention of the grant funding or the grant, we talked about procuring a grant firm, and that was spoken of a year, over a year ago now, because we're in the budget cycle again, and I'm wondering where we are with that procurement.
Sure. So under the city manager section, there was sixty thousand dollars for grant writing assistance. And then when we had our strategic initiative session, what, what we said was that, that RFP would be released in the first quarter of the new fiscal year. So July, August, September, first quarter. And so we are approaching the first quarter we intend, intended to issue that RFP for those services. And then providing the budget is recommended within the proposal.
Okay, so it's going to be, it's going to be issued, and then can we also make sure it's wrapped up quickly? It shouldn't really take more than, what, six weeks, eight weeks?
When we, the hard part of the unit is given, but once we issue and give proposals, we always have a bid opening day and do an award, and that is all standard practice when you get bids, because you kind of award, award them based on our bid award days, which are typically for things like this within sixty days of the bid.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure we, we wrap it up quickly, too. I did have a question around the friends of the library, and maybe you could kind of, I've definitely kind of seen things around friends of the library, given to friends of the library, seen volunteers to friends of the library, but can you give a little bit of context to how the friends of the library supports the library and the programs?
I really don't have the answer to that question.
Okay. Can, can that maybe be brought at a future meeting? And, and any suggestions or recommendations on maybe how we can support the friends of the library as well? Regarding the three hundred thousand dollars on the landscape, on the landscaper, the on-call landscaper, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. Is that specifically for the, the project and the instruction given by council or, because I see the, I think I had seen the words on-call, it made me wonder if that's for anything else?
So we, well, actually it was directly in response to the downtown projects, and I think there's, there's might be a little bit in there because it seems that there's things that come up that we want to do. And staff is asked to give kind of a guess, and our guesses are not based on anything technical. And so we tend to under, underguess. So it's there, but I mean, you use it based on the value of the project that you're working on.
Okay. And, and those funds, though, are part of the larger allocation then for the, for downtown, or these are being requested separate and apart from what we have already approved in one of the previous?
When staff came to the city council, I believe last month in the study session about downtown, the estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand for architectural services for the street skate. And the budget proposal you have before you, the number is three hundred thousand, which includes a little bit more for the other on-call services. And so we will absolutely engage with a landscape architect as priority number one for implementation of the downtown street skate plan, and that is a high priority in the council strategic initiative. If you would like to buy for case loads, we can do the two fifty for the, for the downtown and then fifty for the other on-call. Given that we would likely employ the same vendors, we encapsulated it as one enhancement request.
Okay. Thank you. And then as far as just the expenditures, I'm trying to figure out, I know that last year, all of the, most of the, if not all, but of the camps were, were not held in San Bruno. Based on my review of the rec and the park and rec bulletin this year, the right, the ones that are like nine, you know, nine to four are also not being held this year by, by city staff, right? We've signed up for a number of them personally, and they're all contracted out is what it looks like to me. So I'm trying to figure out the expenditures last year versus this year. It appears that the programming that normally would happen was not happening, and there were a number of temporary staff I know that were not rehired or at some point were, were not, not, you know, in some way separated due to the pandemic. So I'm, I'm not seeing that savings here, and I'm just trying to figure out what was, I guess what was going on, because we didn't have a whole lot of programming going on onsite.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Mason. In the portrait that's actually up for you on the screen, it shows the recreation budget. To actually see the savings that you're talking about, we have to go back one more year to nineteen twenty. So you only have two years, twenty twenty-one, current year, and twenty-one twenty-two. In the, in the current year, twenty twenty-one, you're absolutely right, there was, we did not restore those part-time positions, I believe, the sixty-six part-time positions, nor did we have those camps that were provided by city staff. So in order to see what the budget was, you really need to back up. And I just pulled out the budget document, and so on the first page of the recreation budget, the total expenditures in nineteen twenty, that's sort of pre-COVID year, if you will, were two point two million, which aligned to the, the revenues. And so more than the one point six million in expenditures in that shown year. And so you really have to go back another year. But it is in your budget book, and unfortunately, mine doesn't have each number, but it is the first tab in recreation.
Okay, thank you. So I do think it would be helpful for not just the council, but for the public to understand where there was any savings. Because even though some programs continued on, there were some programs that, that did not, and that really should have resulted in the savings that it sounds like it did, that we may want to be more clear about. The other, and I think that leads me to the, this question, which is the demolition of the rec center. So with all, with all the impacts that you've listed in right here, actually, it's in the state, the slide you have up right now, the picnic site rentals, the loss of gym rentals, full complement of aquatics program revenue, how is that impacting the staff that we have right now? Meaning are there staff that are not working right now, that may not, that, you know, we, there might be some savings on, or are we, because I see we're bringing, I see that you're asking us to approve positions. I just want to make sure that we're also trying to preserve the positions that we have. If there, if there's opportunities there for, for, you know, staff that's existing as opposed to bringing on staff when we may not have the programming for them at this time.
Councilmember Mason, I think the, the best way to respond to that is I switched to slide one eleven, which shows the roughly four at full-time FTEs in the department. Most of those programs that you're referring to were actually ran by our part-time staff that we've not brought back. And so there's, as far as full-time recreation administration, if you will, it's only four FTEs. And so there's really not a savings on current staff time because we haven't budgeted those part-time positions to return. And so that, that's a savings that have already been taken out of the current budget. That I totally get what you're saying, which is you're just not seeing them because they're not in, in prior year budget, because we're certain two years into COVID-nineteen where we haven't been running those programs. And so you're, you're also absolutely right when you talk about the fact that our, a significant amount of our current summer twenty twenty-one programs are ran by contractors versus the type of programs that we ran in prior years that were, one, administered in part by the, the four FTEs in the department, but essentially wholly ran by part-time staff.
Yeah, and I think just, I would just say that, you know, council, we learned of this, of the programming when it opened, and I'm glad there's programming, but I would say as a parent who works, with a spouse who works, those are, those programs, those resources offered for families are incredibly helpful. And the programming that we signed up for this summer, it's, you know, an hour here, three hours here, four hours there, but it's not really a full day, which makes it hard for working families to be able to, to have their kids in programs that really are, are enriching at a time that's realistic for you to actually pick your kids up or drop them off. So it's, you know, something to definitely consider for next year. And then I, I think, I have some comments, but I'll, some of them are more general, so I'll wait for later, but, but otherwise, this was very helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Mason, if you will, I just want to ask the director to talk a little bit about the, the summer program that's appearing at Bel Air. While we're not running it, we do believe that customers that use the, if you will, utilize the city program are utilizing that program.
So they actually just, I know what you're talking about. They actually, I went in today and their registration is closed.
Okay.
Right.
So, but for anybody watching, there is an, there is an opportunity for a summer program through the YMCA at Bel Air for one month, from the end of June, I believe, to the end of July. But it does appear that maybe, I don't know if they're just closed for now because of all the interest, but, but I did go in today and they, and so they were not taking any more, any more registrations.
Thank you for the report. City Manager?
Okay, so that brings us to the conclusion of our departments. We were scheduled to go into our enterprise funds. We're at slide one twenty-three. I think we end at roughly slide one sixty. And so it is, I think we have a decision to make here, which is, do we want to pause, take any final council questions, and we will find time in our future meetings to go through the roughly forty remaining slides? Or do we want to continue going?
Vice Mayor?
We're going on, what, four and a half hours? It's, it's approaching nine-thirty. It was allocated till nine on the schedule I received, and I, I think we should, we should go ahead and take a hard break here and come back at another, at another date.
Mr. Hamilton?
I also vote that we stop here.
I don't know that we need to vote. I think just, I think I see where the consensus is going, right? Any other feedback from colleagues? I'm, I'm going to also concur that we are coming up at nine-thirty, staff has been working all day, other folks have too, and I, I'd like to have them have an opportunity to eat, relax, get a good night's rest. So my, my recommendation would be also to stop here, and again, we might start to think of some things as you ponder this. And certainly, City Manager, council can email you with follow-ups or questions, and Councilwoman Mason?
Yeah, just before we, and I just wanted to ask if, for our next meeting, if we could actually get an agency-wide org chart? And within the org chart, if we could, it might actually be a separate org chart, I'm not sure, but just some, I, I'd like some very real clarity when I hear that a position has been vacant. Is this a, you know, how realistic is this? Is it a position that's been vacant for ten years? Is it, you know, vacant and needed, you know, actually needed in the last year because somebody retired? We have received some incredible requests tonight that I think a number of them are definitely needed. We have some very hard decisions to make. And I, for me personally, I need some context as to what was, what was had, I would say more recently, what is needed? And then in the last year, which position have, have been filled so that we're aware that some of these positions that we have supported are, are there? For example, I didn't know that there had been a management analyst hired in planning. That's, that's helpful to know because that's additional support planning is already getting. The police officer positions, I think that we've said on a number of occasions that we support, you know, additional positions, but how long have those been vacant? Fire inspector position, there's a number of them here. The deputy position has, you know, community services had a deputy position before, the PIO position. So just some context around these positions, what was there and what's being requested and what's already been out in the last year. And then just one other question around the police, the vehicles for the police. How, how many vehicles, do they, you know, do they already have? How, how old are they? My understanding from the police vehicles is that they are all custom. So it would be good to know, you know, similar to what I think staff did a great job on around the fire, the, the fire resolution, what is a typical cost for them? How often are they normally replaced? Something similar to that would be helpful because these cars are very expensive. Thank you.
And, and correct me, and only because I did a lot of reading this weekend, like a lot of us, was there, I just don't remember, maybe it's the hour. City Manager, was there a document that quantified a little bit more some of the vehicles, like their age? Because I know that's always been, council always wanted to know, kind of what's their miles, what's their, the year? Or am I maybe forgetting it was in another budget?
Page four nineteen, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, if you have.
Good.
I have it in front of me, so thank you.
Okay, good. I just thought I had saw it, but I guess it was toward the end.
You did.
I didn't remember it as well as I should. Okay, cool. And I know that is helpful in going over there sometimes, but okay. And I, so folks, I think we're going to do a, stop at nine-thirty, and we're going to adjourn. Staff, all of you, want to thank you for being here. I know it's been a I know it's been a long day and appreciate you sticking with us and being available for questions and presenting the budget for your division and department as well as the enhancement. So City Manager, anything else before we adjourn?
No, council, and we will plan to address this at, the remaining of these presentations on June 8th. It's worth noting that the screen up on the, the slide, upon the screen presents the next three city council meetings on the budget, June 8th. The first budget hearing, the second budget hearing on June 9th, and then final deliberation and adoption planned for June 22nd. With respect to the follow-up questions, we will answer all of those on or for June, June 8th. A number of the questions relate to sections of the budget vote that we have yet to get to. And so I know that some of those questions are actually planned in the presentation for that. But we will leave those for that presentation. But the ones that relate to what we talked about today, we will absolutely attempt to provide an answer by June 8th. Thank you very much. Thank you to all the department heads. Thank you, council, for your diligent attention. Good night.
City, Vice Mayor?
Mayor? Are we going to do a public comment tonight?
Well, yes, we should. Thank you, Mike.
And then just on this slide, it says 7:00 a.m. It's 7:00 p.m., right? Or is it, or it better not be 7:00 a.m.
Unfortunately, that is typical, it is 7:00.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Well, I am very glad that Vice Mayor asked that question prior to us getting there at 7:00. And thank you for, if there's anybody from the community, the public that wanted to speak on the operations or CIP budget, now would be the opportunity to do so. And we will be meeting again, as was stated, at 7:00 p.m. on June 8th. So there are opportunities as well. Okay, seeing no ends, then we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular San Bruno City Council meeting, which will be held June 8th, 7 o'clock via Zoom. Everybody enjoy the rest of your evening.